I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on August 10, 2021 at 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber. To join by Zoom, you can find the agenda on the city's website. If some, for some, or you can join by telephone, 1-929-205-6099. Meeting ID 82032754658. Passcode is 833392. If for some reason you can't connect to Zoom, please contact us at 603-589-3329, and they will help you with connectivity. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. I'm going to ask the city clerk to offer the pledge to the, uh, the prayer, and Alderman Clee to recite the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Clee.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here, attending by Zoom.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Give us some space.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderwoman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Here via Zoom, and I'm alone in, in the room.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. And for those who are attending via Zoom, could you just tell us why you're unable to be here this evening? Those of you who didn't do that when you were called on.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm attending by Zoom to protect my unvaccinated children.
Alderman Cleaver.
Attending via Zoom because of mobility issues and because of doctor's orders.
You have 10 physically in attendance and 2 participating via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a presentation on the governor, on Governor Sununu's Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative. And I believe the presenter this evening is Karen Morton Clark, RFW advisor. Ms. Clark?
Thank you very much. And actually, I'll let you know that why I am on Zoom when I had so hoped to be there in person is because I had a terrible fall over the weekend, and it resulted in this cast. So it was a little inconvenient for me to get there. But I'm thrilled and hope to be here and present a little bit more about the Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative and also to provide an official designation at the end of this short presentation tonight. I'd also like to give a special shout out to Cheryl Lindner and Donna Graham, who have really accommodated me to make this presentation virtually tonight. And I want to just thank them for being awesome. And so with that, Mayor Donches, distinguished aldermen and alderwomen, valued city employees and valued citizens of Nashua. I will go ahead and share my screen and begin the presentation. And if at any time you're unable to hear me, or I do have one short video to share, please let me know that via chat, because I should be able to see that or alert me somehow. But I think we tested it, so we should be good, so. So as mentioned, I am a CRSW and Recovery Advisor and Advocate for the Governor's Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative. And as such, I am the advisor assigned to the City of Nashua for the recovery friendly activities that we will reference tonight. One of the things that I do like to share, and let me try to minimize this so that it's not blocking my screen. There you go. One of the things that I do like to lead off with is a definition by the American Society of Addiction Medicine of substance use disorder, because that's really going to frame our discussion. And it really will help us to think about substance use disorder in the way that we typically reference it as we move through the short presentation. So according to the American Society of Addiction Medicine, addiction is a treatable, chronic, medical disease involving complex interactions among brain circuits, genetics, the environment, and an individual's life experiences. People with addiction use substances or engage in behaviors that become compulsive and often continue despite the harmful consequences. And I think it's important to point out in this section that prevention efforts and treatment approaches for addiction are generally as successful as those for other chronic diseases. So as we begin to think about substance use disorder as a disease, and like any other disease, we would hope for parity in terms of policies in the workplace that would support substance use disorder, just like any other disease, like heart disease or diabetes. So for those who may not know or be familiar with the initiative, I'll give you a brief overview. The initiative was launched in March of 2018 by Governor Sununu. And the foundation of the initiative is to promote health, safety, and wellness for all New Hampshire workplaces and employees. In our work, we always empower workplaces to provide support for employees in recovery, as well as those impacted by substance use disorders. And what I mean by that is you may have employees that are working for you currently who have a family member or a loved one that is impacted by substance use disorder. And we have a way to provide resources to that employee and to you as the employer to help support that employee, should they have that situation. Our initiative always challenges stigma. And in fact, we have a whole training on safe language that helps to challenge stigma and really is part of beginning to change the culture in the workplaces that we work with. And last but not least, everything that we do does encourage employee retention, and we're starting to see those outcomes, as well as employee motivation and productivity. Just some quick accomplishments to share with you. Currently, we have just over, actually, 280 workplaces participating in Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative, representing over 70,000 employees. And the City of Nashua tonight is joining those workplaces here. People have engaged in recovery friendly workplace activities nearly 15,000 times since its inception. And we have not only outreach to 15 states, but now 23 states who have also reached us. And we're in the process of sharing best practices. And there are states that are very interested in replicating our model, as some already have, such as Rhode Island. We built out over 10 trainings, especially when we became remote during COVID times. And to date, we have over 170 businesses trained by our Recovery Friendly Workplace Advisors and some of the virtual trainings that we offer. So we're often asked, well, how do we support recovery friendly workplaces? And I want to share that we always try to deliver a customized approach. So different size organizations, municipalities, towns, businesses, organizations, all different sizes, all stages of readiness, and all different cultures. So what we always want to hear first from folks is what are your needs? And what is your culture like? And where are you at in terms of readiness to develop a recovery friendly culture? As advisors, we also connect you to statewide and local resources. And certainly, I know you're probably all familiar with your local resources. But we often have a request to communicate and connect to statewide resources that could be beneficial to the city as well. And one of the ways we've already done that is I'm the advisor for the City of Manchester as well, and we've already exchanged some information back and forth with the City of Nashua to help drive what we're going to do over the next year and beyond. We always have tools, materials, and templates that we provide for each workplace, so we make it as easy as possible for you to create something that you might want to share with your employees. As I already mentioned, we have no cost trainings and do support employees and their loved ones as well. We also will connect recovery friendly champions to share policy resources and samples. And sometimes, you know, we have, everyone has policies. I'm sure the city has policies and so forth. But it may be that you want to review those. And we can easily connect you with others who have amended or upgraded or changed their policies in a way to support recovery. We're all about peer connections. Anytime we can make connections peer to peer, we find that peer to peer connections are important, often if somebody has a wait time or they can't do the proper level of treatment. And this would come through your recovery community organizations. Or sometimes employees are trained as recovery coaches and even CRSWs that can provide internal support and augment an EAP program and HR and other efforts, like a wellness committee that you might have. We do provide guidance for any committees that you would like to create following your designations. And we also will provide support in terms of any survey that you might like to execute to determine the needs of your employees. And so with the City of Manchester, we did execute a survey. We had a really good number of respondents. And out of that, the City of Manchester shared with us that the most important topic that they would like more support and information on is compassion fatigue, stress, and burnout. So we actually have something that we're going to be presenting, and you'll be included in that at no cost, I might add, to address that particular focus. And last but not least, we always will have ongoing dialogue. I'm always available for you to reach out to. And we try to provide a structure that will allow you to continue to grow over time and further develop your recovery friendly culture. So I mentioned the trainings a moment ago. These are all the trainings that we currently have in progress. Some of them have become in person. We do a lot of, there are a lot of self-paced options, which I know a lot of the employees in the City of Nashua have been participating in. And we also have the online only, only trainings that people can access as well. And as I mentioned, we'll be adding that compassion fatigue training within the next month. So we're also asked, well, what can employers do? And you, as a city employer, you know, you might say, well, what can we do to further the Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative and support individuals in their recovery? So this is a very quick bulletized list. It's actually also in much more detail from the SAMSA site. There's a link there that I can send to you following this presentation. But the first thing would be is perhaps through a survey as an example to identify issues and assess needs. And then at that point, you can review that with myself as the advisor. We can talk about possibly revising policies or taking a look at those and always providing ongoing awareness and education to employees as it suits each department. And I realize each department is a little bit different, too. So we would want to talk in a little bit more detail about that to ensure that we're meeting the specific needs of each department. Employers, I know, are always focused on safety. And we always try to kind of reinforce that prevention focus for employers, as well as employers are in the position to connect employees to resources, to support groups, and then obviously periodically evaluate, you know, how are things going and what kind of changes do we need to make to continue to be successful? And I will share with you that there's, as an example, there's an employer in Dover, New Hampshire called Chameleon Group. And they actually have progressed so far that they actually have someone from the recovery community organization come in and run an all recovery support group during company time for anyone who is interested on a weekly or even a bi-weekly basis in some conditions, in some instances. So we are always asked by employers, so what are the signs and symptoms of a substance use? Or how do we know if somebody's using substances? And certainly, we can provide a list of, you know, sort of those physical signs and symptoms. But really, what I want to point out with this slide is that the best identification practice is to really cultivate open and honest conversations with employees in a safe, supportive, and recovery friendly environment. And creating this environment is really what becoming a recovery friendly workplace is all about. And I know that your declaration really does speak to that. So when having a conversation about substance use concerns, if you look at the circular diagram here, it's always important to remain mindful of being open and honest, showing genuine empathy and compassion, and leaving judgment at the door, so to speak. And we'll help you to develop a plan. You may already have some plans, so hopefully we can augment that and add some resources to your menu so that you can offer tangible support to any employee that might be requesting assistance. I wanted to reference a case study that was done with Jenfoot America. If you're not familiar with Jenfoot, they're actually a manufacturing firm located in the North Country. And they became designated right about the time I came on board as an advisor. And since that time, and this will demonstrate, too, that it doesn't, recovery friendly culture is, you know, developing over time. It doesn't happen overnight. But since that, five employees have come forward to, to seek help. And they are hiring from their local recovery homes. And two of those individuals have now become shift leaders. And then the employees together decided to form what they call a Helping Hands Committee. And some of those individuals are certified as recovery coaches. So they can talk to other employees that might not be quite ready to go the next step and can kind of partner with them to get to the appropriate level of care through their employer. And this is one company that, over the course of a little over two years, really attributes their change in recovery friendly culture to decreases in accidents and injuries, lost days, and light duty days. And of course, this would be something we'd aspire to, for all companies to have. At this point, I wanted to play a short video for you. Waypoint, which in this particular case, this is the president and CEO of Borja in Manchester, they really have worked hard to develop an all-inclusive recovery friendly workplace. So not just recovery in terms of substance use disorder, but in terms of mental health, diversity, and so forth. And I'd just like to have him explain in his words how they've been able to do that.
We're sort of in the space, as a provider of social services, where we, we deal with people that are in recovery all the time. We work with the homeless youth population that have been impacted by this a lot. We work with moms and their young kids, and a lot of them are in recovery. And we get involved with them because they're in recovery. We also work with foster care. And oftentimes, kids get placed in foster care because their parents can't take care of them. And one of the things that we do in our business is really help these individuals and families sort of like, you know, get better, recover, get back on their feet. So we started investigating at that time in Manchester. A number of colleagues of mine that were going through the process. And we engaged in sort of understanding more about it. And, and the minute we heard about it, we says, this is something that we absolutely have to do. We owe it to our clients, and we owe it to our employees. We have 300 employees. And I'll be honest, exactly like you mentioned before, I don't know how many are struggling, but I can tell statistically there's a bunch of them that have either themselves or family members. So I think it's an important journey for us. I've never heard anybody say, you know, I'm struggling with substance abuse, or my spouse is sort of in detox right now, and I have to take. So obviously, it is not culturally a conversation that we know how to have in the workplace. And I think that's so wrong. And I think what I want to do is move to a culture in which it is okay to talk about this, because it happens everywhere. For us, and again, we started right before COVID. We had conversations. And something became clear to us that the focus on sort of recovery friendly workplace was very important, that we wanted to be inclusive of all kinds of recovery. So for example, mental health, which is really prevalent in some of the people that we serve. It was important for us to include that. And then May 25th happened, and George Floyd was murdered. And there was an outcry in my agency, what are we going to do about this? So we diverted ourselves, and we actually, Sam was really helpful in, in sort of coaching us, because the initial was, okay, we're going to be about recovery. And then we make this much bigger claim around racial equity and diversity. So our declaration is actually much more extensive than most declarations, because we're like throwing everything under the sink, and that it's all about this. But what we do is we formed a committee, the 16 people that actually, and I started the committee. But I said, I want to start the committee, because I'm the CEO, and I want you to understand that I'm behind this. But I really want to empower this committee to make the decisions. And if I'm there, it's going to be really hard. So actually, I have removed myself now from the committee. And the committee is designing a survey, is designing the trainings that we're going to have. It's going to put a, a, a plan in place. And they have been empowered in the organization to actually take the leadership and the charge of, you know, changing the culture for us. We've been actually very lucky that there's a, a pilot program. It's out of the High Perth Foundation, the Hope Foundation in Lebanon, and with Headrest, which is an organization that does, that provides services for persons in recovery. So they're funding this licensed drug and alcohol counselor to be a resource for our employees. And we're starting with three of our offices. We have 14 offices with three of our offices, Lebanon, Concord, and Manchester. And they can call this person for themselves or any member and actually engage into sort of treatment. It's not just the consult, it is treatment, knowing that in times of crisis like this, we know that, you know, substance misuse gets elevated, domestic violence gets elevated, abuse of kids gets elevated. So what we saw is an increased level of stress and anxiety in our workers. So we quickly pivoted to how can we provide the supports? So basically, we did a lot of sort of management team meetings to sort of say like, if you used to meet with your team once every other week, you're going to do this weekly. And you're going to make sure that you check. And you would make sure that supervision is not so much how you're doing your work. Supervision is like, how are you doing, period? But what I have seen is the absolute enthusiasm of our staff in engaging in this conversation and engaging in this process. And I remember saying like, let me make clear that there's two ways of looking at race and diversity and, you know, substance misuse and recovery. And one is if you look out the window and see and observe, that at some point, you actually have to look at the mirror and say, what does that mean for me? What does it mean to have white privilege? What does it mean to have all of the things that are happening in our society? That, and how do we contribute? We, I, I mentioned the survey we had about sort of, and we sent it, and, you know, we're expecting 200. We already had 100 responses. And one of the things that people are excited about is that we have promised that we're going to have conversations about what it means for them as a group, for us as an organization, and people are so excited.
So obviously, if you have any questions about that or some of the things that Waypoint or other recovery friendly workplaces are doing, I'm certainly happy to answer your questions. I just wanted to reference some major resources. We do give a full training on the details of New Hampshire 211 and the doorway, which I'm sure you're, I'm pretty sure you're all familiar with, as well as Revive Recovery Center, the Public Health Network, and the Greater Nashua Mental Health Organization. And all of those are key resources for us in your local area, as well as we have a lot of national and statewide resources that we promote. And as Borja mentioned, and as we are continuing to work very closely with NAMI, as well as a pilot program out of Dover called the Dover Mental Health Alliance, we realize that there's a real correlation between mental health and recovery. And we always want to highlight that and also provide, as I do with most every presentation, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, the text line, and also a mention of peer support agencies, which not everyone is familiar with. But these are agencies that provide no cost, peer-based support for those with mental illness. And they also have warm lines. So if it's not a crisis, it is an opportunity to talk with a peer that you can just talk with. And hopefully, that is a bridge to the next step in terms of somebody's appropriate level of care. This is our contact information here. Our website, recoveryfriendlyworkplace.com is a place you can go to find out more information about the initiative. And again, if anyone watching would like to submit a letter of interest, that takes about one minute, and that's right on our website. And we also have a strong presence on social media. Borja is one of four panelists that you saw in that last clip there. And that entire business panel is on our LinkedIn page, or I can send you a link to that. And so without further ado, I'm wondering if I could invite Mayor Donches to read the City of Nashua's declaration.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Should I proceed?
Mayor, please.
Well, first, I want to thank Ms. Morton Clark for all of the work you've put in and for the important initiative that you've brought to the state of New Hampshire and now to the City of Nashua, because we definitely want to be a recovery friendly workplace. But I will go ahead and read the declaration which you've referred to. Nashua is a welcoming city where the contributions of all are valued and celebrated. A strong dedication to serving the community, teamwork, integrity, and respect are the foundations of our city government. The City of Nashua is committed to a healthy, safe, and stigma-free work environment. With our enrollment in the state's Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative, we now have greater resources to improve upon our commitment. This initiative encourages an environment in which employers, employees, and community members can collaborate to create positive change and to eliminate barriers for those impacted by substance use disorder and mental health issues. In order to achieve a high level of employee health, employee safety, and productivity, we continue to encourage all employees to reach out for help and for support for themselves or a loved one. Nashua is connected with the doorway of Greater Nashua, with Greater Nashua Mental Health, with Revive Recovery, and with many other local organizations offering peer-based support for people affected by or afflicted with substance use disorder and for those suffering from mental health issues. Nashua is a caring community with a city government that strives every day to help all, in its embrace, live their best lives and to achieve success. And that is the declaration that we have worked on with the Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative. And again, I want to thank Ms. Morton Clark for bringing this to us and working so closely with our, with our employee team, who are all here. And thank you all for all of your efforts, city employees, in helping us bring this initiative forward.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that, I would like to invite Cheryl Lindner, on my behalf, to present you with the Recovery Friendly Workplace Official Designation Certificate. And I'll stop sharing my screen, and I'll read what is on the certificate as she is approaching. State of New Hampshire, by His Excellency Christopher T. Sununu, Governor, Recovery Friendly Workplace Designation. Be it hereby known that I, Christopher T. Sununu, Governor of the State of New Hampshire, present a Recovery Friendly Workplace Designation to the City of Nashua. Recovery friendly workplaces encourage healthy, safe, and stigma-free work environments where employers, employees, and communities can collaborate to create positive change and eliminate barriers for those impacted by addiction. This certifies that the City of Nashua has met all of the requirements of the Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative. On behalf of the citizens of New Hampshire, I commend you for your hard work and dedication in becoming a recovery friendly workplace. And it is signed by Governor Sununu as of June 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So can we bring the team up to help?
Yes, certainly.
I love that you're getting some photos. Thank you, because we're going to highlight that on our social media. So thank you for doing that, everyone who's participating.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I will just sign off now unless I hear any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present, and I'll look forward to working with all of you in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the August 10, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clee.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry at Gathrake.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, August 10, 2021, at 7:34 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by city clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman-at-Large Mike O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the greater betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear everyone, and I am attending remotely to protect my unvaccinated children.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here, participating via Zoom. I'm doing so because I had a late evening at work, and there is no one in the room with me, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm hearing him in the chamber.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderwoman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Here via Zoom. There's no one in the room with me. I'm not able to attend in person because of mobility issues and doctor's orders.
Alderman Harry at Gathrake.
I'm present.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here.
You have 11 physically in attendance and three participating via Zoom.
Thank you. Mayor, did you, also, also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. First, I wanted to speak about the situation regarding COVID-19 here in Nashua. We, of course, have Dr. Storrs, the Chair of the Board of Health, with us, and they were considering our status at a special meeting last week. And we just had Director Bobby Bagley, who's been directing, leading the city's efforts regarding our COVID-19 response since the beginning. But the basic facts are that we've seen some increase in the number of cases, and certainly, we've now seen the presence of the Delta variant. The number of cases I mentioned has climbed to now a moderate level of transmission. Over the past 14 days, we have seen 101 new cases per 100,000 people. That's the metric. And there's Ms. Bagley there. 101 new cases per 100,000 in the last 14 days. That is one of the principal metrics. And also, we have seen a positivity rate over the last week of 3.5%. These numbers are up to some degree, but they seem relatively stable over the last couple of weeks. So we're hoping that this is a plateau and, and that we will not see further communication or further spread. But it is, these numbers are higher. We have more cases than now, about 60-some active cases. We have more than we did a few weeks back, a couple months back, and so we need to watch this, continue to watch this carefully, because we know the Delta variant is more contagious and potentially more dangerous to young people, unvaccinated people here in the community. We now have about 55% of the city fully vaccinated, but the percentage of those 18 and above that is, that are vaccinated is significantly higher than that, probably around 2/3, because the last numbers we got were suggested that for those 12 to 18, only 7% are vaccinated. So we still need, we still have some work to do. But if you need more detail, of course, we can have Director Bagley report to you at any time. I also, Madam President, wanted to mention the escrows, which you see in the proposed escrows in R21162. We do have some updated information regarding the city's, the picture going into the fall regarding the tax rate. First of all, CFO Griffin and I will, of course, go to the Budget Committee and discuss the details here. There's a lot of detail when you, when you meet. But there is some new news. First of all, the, at the beginning of the year, as we've discussed a number of times, the state announced that they were going to raise our pension bill by $4.4 million, over and above the cost of any increase in wages. That still is in place. They also had informed us early on that we would see a $7.5 million reduction in school aid. Within the last several weeks, news has come, and we're trying to fully verify this, but it seems that we can say with some degree of confidence that most or all of that lost school aid will be restored, at least for fiscal '22, fiscal year 2022, which, of course, is good news and, and helps us considerably. Assuming that is the case, we will not need to direct the $4.4 million of American Rescue Plan funds into lost revenue, because that revenue won't have been lost. But instead, and so we'll have more American Rescue Plan funds available. The school department suffered a $1.2 million revenue loss in their lunch program, and they're, they have a deficit there because lunches were free by edict of the federal government. So what we will discuss with the Budget Committee is transferring $1.2 million to cover that loss. That's the lost revenue source. Transferring, of course, the unexpendant funds from the school department and elsewhere into the surplus, and using the surplus revenue. When we put all that together, we can dedicate $3 million or thereabouts into the SURF, that is, the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, for the purchase of new equipment, as well as meet some of these other escrow items. Many of the other escrow items have to do with making sure we have the match available for federal grants, which we either have been awarded or may receive. And of course, those are very important because often we get paid three, four, five to one with respect to the local match on those grants. And as a result of all this, we can expect that the tax rate will be more favorable than we had previously projected. And we can talk about more of those details with the Budget Committee and with you in the next few weeks. I know that, and then, Madam President, I know that we have the Police Commission issue on tonight. Now, I know, I don't expect that you're going to vote to put this on the ballot at the present time, but people have been asking about the rationale for this, so I thought I would address it briefly for you. The, of course, the Nashua, we are the only city, the only community out of some 200 in New Hampshire that does not have local control of the police department. And the way that happened was that back in 1891, that's how far back this goes, the state of New Hampshire began to appoint police commissions for a number of cities, Laconia, Portsmouth, Manchester, Berlin, and others, but provided that any community that wanted to revert back to local control could do so through a vote of the population. Now, all of the other cities have done that. The voters in all of the other cities have elected to go to some form of local control, more accountable, more transparent to its citizens. And as far as I know, no, no vote has ever gone against local control. So this merely proposes what many consider to be a very modest reform, that simply we begin to, like the other cities in New Hampshire, begin to exercise local control over the PD. Now, our police department is certified, and they've pointed that out. That's very good, but so is Dover, and Dover has local control and has had local control for a long time. There are other certified communities in New Hampshire as well. In addition, the proposal is to expand the commission from three to five to more adequately represent the overall citizenship of the city. Things have changed a lot since 1891. And in those 130 years since 1891, only one woman has ever been nominated to the Nashville Police Commission. Now, I'm sure that were local control accomplished here in Nashua, we could certainly do a lot better than that, and we could reflect our overall community in, in supervi, in overseeing a very important department of the city on which our residents and taxpayers expend $35 million a year. And I wanted to address a couple of misconceptions before I conclude on this subject. It's been said by some that the mayor can just remove anybody from the police commission. A simple reading of this shows otherwise. Yeah, removal can occur if there's something wrong, but with the approval of the Board of Aldermen. I mean, so that's, that can occur, that could occur in Concord. The mayor has no authority to just unilaterally do anything. Has to come back to, either to get the appointments confirmed. All appointments would have to be confirmed by the Board of Aldermen. And in addition, any removal, which I'm sure would be a very, very rare occurrence, would need to be approved by the Board of Aldermen. In addition, the, there seems to be this idea that if we have local control here, there will be some kind of, you know, these horrible dire consequences. I don't believe that that is accurate. We don't see those consequences, these horrible things happening, in the other cities, all of which have local control. So the implication has to be either that there are these horrible cities, things happening elsewhere, which I don't think is not the case, or that somehow we here are going to be more dishonest, more underhanded than people in other communities throughout New Hampshire. And I know Nashua people, and I don't believe that to be true, you know, at all. So what this proposes is that we make the appointments here at City Hall, you all confirm them, people could watch it on TV, see the people interviewed, and decide, you know, whether we're doing a good job with these appointments. You know, it's, it is, I think, in the view of many, a very modest reform, something that's done all over the state and would not in any way compromise the character or the quality of the Nashville Police Department. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to certainly congratulate Brandon Laws, who had a young baby girl over the last few weeks. He, he and Sophia certainly deserve this happiness, and you can tell from his posts that he is very much in love with his daughter. And so, like we saw before with Shoshana, when she had her children, it's really great to be, just have a member of our city family here, celebrate such a, such a happy event. And that is the conclusion of my remarks, Madam, Madam President.
Response to the remarks of Mayor. I'll start over here. Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I hate to, I don't want to pick on you about this, but you, you said that the transmission rate for COVID here in the city was at a moderate level. I had a conversation with Director Bagley about this on, on the Health Department's website. It said moderate in one place, and it said substantial in another. And this is important because the CDC guidelines about mask wearing depend very much on whether we are at a moderate level or a substantial level. And so when I talked to her yesterday, or actually, it was by email, she said that we are at a substantial level. So is there some new information where you say moderate, or is that just a slip of the tongue? Well, I think I'm using the term not as technically as that, but- but we need to ask Director Bagley. But 5% positivity rate is a significant threshold. And we did reach 5% last week, but this week it was three, you know, two weeks ago, but this week, three and a half. So three and a half is better than five. And I think five is the threshold between, I think, between moderate and substantial. But we need to ask. But the point is, regardless of what we call it exactly, and let's get it, let's get the, let's get the precise characterization from Director Bagley. But the numbers are up, and there's reason for, that we need to be cautious and watch very carefully what's going on.
All set?
Is Director Bagley available? Can she clarify that for us?
Certainly, if she's willing. Director Bagley?
Thank you, Madam President. The numbers go up and down every day. And what we typically look at is, on the state's website, they give an average of the number of cases that are reported. And the numbers are usually updated at the end of the day on Friday, sorry, at 5 o'clock every day. And I believe, Mayor, the numbers that you were reading were from the day before. So they've already updated. And so right now, in the state of New Hampshire, several of our counties are now at substantial that weren't two days before. So they're usually based, the number of substantial on the number of cases that are over 100,000 per cases. So right now, as of today, we're at 100 and, I just saw, 104 per 100,000. And so that puts us in substantial. The other metric that the mayor mentioned with the case positivity rate, when we have those two numbers up, it puts us up at even higher risk for spread in the community. So that 100,000, so that one, over 100 per 100,000, puts us in substantial for case rates. I hope that clarifies it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Responses to the remarks of Mayor? Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Alderman Laws and Sophia with their new baby. And with three daughters and four granddaughters, the loving work now begins.
Anyone else? I have a question, Mayor, about...
I'm sorry, I don't think you can see me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shoshana, go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to correct the mayor in that I only had one child during my term. But thank you for the kind words. And that I did see Alderman Laws and Sophia over the weekend. They are proud, excited parents, and said hello to everyone. And thanks to the board for the support. So it was nice. She's adorable.
Thank you. Mayor, I do have a question. Do you know, how many women have served on the fire commission? 100-plus years?
I'm not sure.
One. Thank you. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the regular Board of Aldermen meeting of July 13, 2021, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications been received from Jeffrey L. Snow, Superintendent of Edgewood Cemetery, regarding request for joint convention.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees on Tuesday, September 14, 2021, at 7:30 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Communications been received from John Griffin, CFO, comptroller, regarding ordinance O 21067. From David Boucher, wastewater superintendent, regarding variable frequency drives wet weather facility. From Kimberly Kleiner, Administrative Services Director, regarding ordinance O 2167, recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday and revising the holiday section of the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies. From Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow for three communications that were received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication from Janine Kilgallian as an email requesting the introduction of a communication from multiple endorsers relative to Resolution R 21143, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to the manner of appointments to the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners. From Lori Willscher, President of the Board of Aldermen, regarding formation of work-study group relative to the police commissioners. From Mike and Stephanie Valentin, regarding R 21143, change to the police commission.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Next up is the period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I will ask that when you come to the microphone that you identify your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. The first person up is Anthony Storrs.
Good evening. Tony Storrs, 17 Cameron Drive, Chairman of the Board of Health. I won't need three minutes. I just want to say that, once again, the three doctors are against changing the comp position of the board from three to five. I think one of the things that we do is we work really well together. Why change something that has that great productivity? Also, last week, we saw a change happen specifically about changes with Delta. Delta's now definitely in our state. And we had a communication with the public on Thursday night. We felt that went really, really well. And I hope that the board sees what a great Board of Health that we have, and that we work really well. Also, I should say, with the division. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kerrigan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kerrigan, Chief of the Nashville Police Department. I'll be brief tonight, as I know you all understand my position of opposition on this legislation. But before I begin, I just want to clarify two points made earlier. Number one, I want to make sure that you, to remind you that not one person from the mayor's office or the Board of Aldermen has ever reached up to the governor's office to present anyone else for the position of police commissioner. The second thing I'd like to clarify is that the Nashville Police Department is four times bigger than the Dover Police Department. It's much more difficult to get accredited when you're that much larger. There are more standards to follow and more people to have to prove it to. As I begin, I'd like to take a minute to say thank you to a majority of you here tonight. I appreciate you being willing to recognize this as an important issue that it is in understanding that your constituents, the city of Nashville, deserve the opportunity to discuss, debate, and offer opinions on this issue. This issue is being framed as a lack of transparency on the part of the police department, when in fact, the opposite is true. A petition getting signed in the dark of night with no informative session against most of the Aldermen's wishes is anything but transparent. The fact that most of you recognize that a rushed decision may have dangerous, long-term consequences on the quality of your police department is encouraging. I know Board President Willscher and Alderwoman Kelly have worked hard to put together a group of stakeholders to lead this review and discussion. I know members of the police department and the public appreciate that. Over the past week, I've been contacted by several Aldermen, business leaders, and residents of Nashua posing different ideas, proposals, and the questions on this issue. It is very apparent that there is not a clear understanding of a problem or what this legislation will do to the long-term safety of Nashua. Let me repeat that. Most people don't understand this issue. The reasons behind it...
One minute.
With the long-term ramifications of it. They want to understand it and discuss it. They want input and clarity. Most people have been presented with a question to sign a petition to change the commission. They're not even being presented with a comprehensive or even accurate representation of the issue. It is recklessly being rushed, leaving no checks and balances, and that is dangerous and irresponsible. This alone should tell everyone that they don't want the voters of Nashville to make an educated decision. Most of you are as frustrated by this as I am on an issue as significant as this. There should be absolutely no working group, education sessions, or inability to ask questions. Every one of you knows me. You know I'm accessible and will take time to meet with anyone regarding any issues. My track record speaks for itself. We are very proud of our PD and the relationships we have. We are also a very progressive department, and we're always willing to self-evaluate and make improvements. I am more than willing to do this on this issue. I am not asking to stop this process completely. What I'm asking for is more time to evaluate the changes and make sure we do it right. We need to ensure that all sides and opinions are reflected and heard in this process. I strongly believe you know you have a group of professionals who take it personal to keep you safe and connected to the community. Unfortunately, I understand that the opinion of the majority of you doesn't seem to matter here tonight. Your role as responsible representative seems to have been bypassed. I appreciate your willingness to continue with the working group and your willingness to truly study the issue and try to give an honest, educated, and well-thought-out recommendation. I am committed to do the same. The citizens of Nashville deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Siegel?
Thank you, Madam President. Ken Siegel, 224 Parker Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I'm coming here as a former Alderman, somebody who cares about the city, having raised my children, lived here for 34 years. I have three questions that I cannot ask the mayor directly. I'm not in the horseshoe, but hopefully, by posing those questions, I might get one of you to ask one or more of these three questions. Why didn't the mayor just allow direct election of commissioners if he was concerned about the will of the people? That seems to be the most obvious solution. I'm not going to argue for that. I'm just posing the question. Would Alderman-at-large Jim Donches ever have supported this if it was proposed by Mayor Lozo? I don't think there would have been any chance of that, given my experience working with Jim, who I actually like, but we don't agree on this. Why is now different? The other question, why wasn't this an issue back in the 80s and the early 90s when Mayor Donches was mayor then? There was an opportunity to make that change. Same mayor, same situation. So there was a statement made that this had, that there shouldn't be any impact, because what's special about Nashville? What's bad about Nashville? Or what's happened? Unfortunately, if you just do a Google search, you're not going to find some of the things that did happen back in the early 90s. In particular, the issue with the Middle Streets, the Elm Street Middle School bid that sent three Aldermen to federal prison. One of those Aldermen was Phil Grand Maison, who was the president of the Board of Aldermen when the investigation really took a turn. As Tim Heffron said, who was eventually the chief of police, if it was not for the structure of the police commission, they would not have been able to successfully pursue that investigation, since the Aldermen themselves were trying to obstruct the investigation. Further, what about Mayor Lozo, who was actively, on the record, trying to oppose the Nashville Police Department when they were investigating her husband, Dave? And I'm not going to go into the details of that, because it's not relevant. But she was the mayor then. And in fact, I would believe that Mayor Donches absolutely knows about what was going on then with the prior mayor. And one of the reasons why I don't believe that you would have supported this notion had she raised it is because you knew about that stuff. And again, my opinion. Obviously, only you know what's in your mind.
Thirty seconds.
Finally, why is this person, me, who doesn't live here, making a statement about this? Because I care, because I did the research, and because somebody has to make a statement? It's okay to care about things even if you don't live locally. People give money to campaigns where they're not living. People check the weather where they don't live. There's a lot of things people do where they don't live. But I have 34 years of vested interest in Nashville and four years on this board. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Jim Tolner?
Jim Tolner, 1 Sequoia Circle, Nashua. Boy, that green light goes on quickly.
Fast.
I am here as a resident of Nashua for the last 32 years, who believes and respects the form of government we have. It's always a good thing to have dialogue and to work towards a common goal, which I think most would agree is in the best interest of the citizens, whether it be public safety, education, services, or the quality of life. The key is to first identify a issue, study the issue, make your presentation, manage the outcome while following the legislative process. Disenfranchising no one, communicating effectively, and moving forward in a focused, positive manner. That did not happen here. The initial legislative push was certainly not an inclusive process that involved this entire board. So this was not given the vetting that it deserves. Instead, we have a mayor explaining the genesis of this proposed amendment as a reaction to his limited survey. And now, it's spotlighted as a citizen's petition. So understandably, I'm a bit confused when an Alderwoman says she had a hand in drafting what is actually on the citizen petition. This feels like some of you are deciding, you know better, you want something, and you don't want to wait for the process to run its course. This initiative was conceived in a vacuum, floated to a select, limited group, and then absolutely rushed. This was designed to be rushed. There is no other way to spin that. The NPD was never approached about this, not the commission, and more importantly, not the face of the Nashville Police Department, your officers, who are out there every day, working for you. Never a whisper.
One minute.
Any reasonable metric, the life cycle of this proposed charter change does not serve the citizens or the elected government. This initiative has effectively silenced any member of this Board of Aldermen who disagrees. That is not how this government is supposed to operate. Personally, I will always be in favor of change if it makes something better. But change simply for the sake of change will always have unintended consequences.
Thirty seconds.
Which is why time on this issue is a benefit and process a necessity when moving forward with something so important as this issue. Thank you.
Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum. I reside at 47 Berkeley Street, and I'm a member of the Board of Health. And I'll be brief. I just want to add to what Dr. Storrs said, that the changes proposed are not just about adding members, but also about prescribing which members. Board of Health needs to be nimble to respond to the problems at hand. And the work of the Board of Health is highly predicated on individuals who not only have subject matter expertise, but also have a keen awareness of the community, the needs of the community, and also leadership experience in order to help build consensus and to help advise and make recommendations to the Board of Aldermen by considering a vast array of conditions and of needs of the community. And so it's not just about a matter of a person having expertise. I think there are ways to accomplish some of the things that are intended by using subject matter experts, uh, by using subject matter experts, like we use Dr. Granoc as a consultant. He's an infectious disease expert, obviously very important at this particular time. So I just ask your consideration, uh, to not, uh, pass, uh, this ordinance, uh, but rather to engage in dialogue about thoughtful change that might be needed in the future that will serve us for many years to come as we take this journey together. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our public comment period. Communications requiring-
Oh, excuse me.
Laura Colhoun, why?
I'm sorry.
Residents with phones, do, they don't have any say?
Laura Colhoun.
Thank you. I'm calling in reference to the, uh, police commissioners again. Obviously, the mayor has not, uh, remembered what happened in nineteen ninety-five, where, uh, we had aldermen actually go to jail. I also don't appreciate the mayor going around on our time while we're paying him, getting people to sign it and not giving them the full story on this. I'm again a- asking people not to vote for this. It, it's not broken, so don't try to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Prince?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So this is Sonia Prince, forty-nine Tough Drive. This is about letting the people of Nashville vote and decide what they prefer. All cities and towns in New Hampshire have taken the local control, which, if the question passes, will allow this Board of Aldermen to vet and interview commission candidates, along with including public input for the very first time in an open, public setting. I've been intimidated, my friends have been intimidated, I've been called dangerous in the papers by a police department leader and multiple papers in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, all for filing a legal citizen's petition for a question on the ballot that every single New Hampshire city and town has filed before me. Nashville is the last city who didn't take back local control. Like Nashville, the Dover, Manchester Police Departments also Kalia certified, which the police chief has said repeatedly about Nashville and why things shouldn't change. They have also taken back local control over the police commission appointments. Are they considered dangerous as well? It's amazing to me the great lengths they will go to prevent the Nashville people from voting. What are they afraid of and what will the public discover? Transparency is important, change is normal after over a hundred years. No one needs to run anything by the chief. That is not in the bylaws and sounds very controlling to me. One commissioner is married to a sitting board member, alderwoman. If the Nashville people vote and decide, such conflicts will not be allowed in the future. They claim there is room for improvement, yet I will remind people that zero women have been appointed to the police commission in forty years. My question is, did you not think there was room for women in year two thousand? How about year two thousand ten? No? Two thousand fifteen? Women are fifty percent of the population and sexism is allowed and well. I am the only one who's tired, am I the only one, who's tired of the good old boys excuses? I have a daughter and this is embarrassing. Why, why the voter suppression? Let the people decide, let the people of Nashville vote. I want to thank Alderman Lori Wilshire for pointing out that there's another boys' club at the fire department. That is just sad. I guess we have a lot more work to do. To the hundreds of voters I spoke to, all want vetting to happen in public and with public input. They said, let the people decide. They don't necessarily agree with the question, but they want it on the ballot. Often, the people do know better. The Nashville Police Commission had their fair share of scandals over the years. You can look it up. Let the people decide. No women on the commission is a fabulous reason for change. Thank you.
Mike Valentine?
Thank you. Mike Valentine, nine Bartlett Ave. I think most citizens would be surprised to learn how our police commissioners are appointed. This is an inherently local issue and should, I believe, I believe should be kept local. But I've been even more surprised and frankly a little disturbed to see the chief's reaction to the proposed change, calling the resolution an abuse of power and sending uniformed officers to the Personnel Committee meeting on July sixth that I attended. Please, Alderman, the commissioners should be appointed by our local elected officials, not by the state. Local will mean better vetting, more people involved in the appointment process, greater transparency. The police argument that local control can allow more corruption is directed to you. I think that any improper interference, if it occurs, will be much more obvious and correctable at the local level than at the state level. Some of the response from the police and friends is aggressive, arrogant, and it seems to me designed to intimidate. A critical principle in our democracy is civilian control over military and law enforcement, but it depends on civilians willing to exercise control. People of Nashville should be allowed to vote on this. Please advance this resolution as it is to the ballot for November. Thank you.
Victoria Chesterly? Victoria? Okay, I don't see Victoria. Lori Ordolano?
Hi. Yes, good evening. Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. The reruns of a popular TV show, Chicago PD, still command a sizable audience. One ad frequently run to attract viewers features the lead actor as a combative detective exchanging words with the city mayor. Obviously frustrated about some action the detective has taken, she exclaims, "You work for me." In response, the detective answers, "I work for the city of Chicago." In many ways, this outburst captures the essence of an important public policy and charter change issue facing the city of Nashville. To what extent should elected politicians exert control over the inner workings of their police department? We are all aware, many police departments across the country have been the object of increased scrutiny, protests, and calls for change and reform. Some proposals are discouragingly extreme to their scope. To date, Nashville has been spared the agony of trying to respond to the kinds of issues that have generated these protests and proposals and hopefully will continue to do so. Our police department enjoys broad community support. Thankfully, it ain't broke, but our mayor still wants to fix it. Unhappy with the system of political oversight that currently exists, he is proposing changes that give the mayor direct political control. As it stands now, the aldermen appoint one of their members and an alternate as a liaison to the commission. It is important to bear in mind that two aldermen have regularly attended commission meetings and have not raised red flags. Had there been cause for concern, those aldermen were obliged to report misgivings back to the full board. No records of misgivings or persistent or systemic deficiencies exist to justify the mayor's sudden action. The mayor is proposing a commission overhaul. He would like direct authority to nominate commission members with the aldermen appointing all members of a larger five-person commission. The mayor would then be able to use the commission to pressure the chief on any number of internal matters. The mayor is unwilling to subject his opinions to the full review process and vet this important change before the community and board.
One minute.
Jamming the petition through unwilling to allow the scrutiny of his board and the community, who may have different opinions. Ready-fire aim is a bad choi- choice for a charter change. Given at the present, the mayor and aldermen must approve the operating budget of the police department, additional political leverage can only be aimed at personnel matters and day-to-day operas- um, operations. Notwithstanding the laudable objections, uh, objectives of local, local control, this for Nashville is a bad idea. In summary, the proposed charter change would, one, drastically alter the semi-autonomy of the police commission, would increase the risk of blatant political interference and bias in operations, would certainly disrupt department operations, and have not demonstrated any potential increase in efficiency or effectiveness. The potential benefits of local control are undefined and outweighed by the risks of political damage to the operation. Therefore, the charter change should be voted down. One last quick item. I don't support the increase in, uh, uh, board members on the Board of Health. I wish we had more time to talk to both. I've been, I've spoken publicly about this. Please support our doctors on the Board of Health in maintaining that board as a three-member, uh, body. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Chesterly?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Sorry about before, I couldn't unmute. Um, Victoria Chesterly, fifteen Lutheran Drive. I've been a resident of Nashville for sixty-eight years, and I feel that the police services are the most important services provided by the city. And so far, things have been working great. Um, I would like to mention the issue with the lack of women on the, um, police commission. People have to volunteer for the police commission, and I don't know how many women have actually done that. I think that if more women would volunteer, we would have had more women on the commission. And I think it's up to all of us and the aldermen to talk to the women that we know, that we think might actually serve and serve well and get them to volunteer. And the way that they're chosen now, I think, works, has worked fine. Um, the names go to the governor's council and I, I think the arms length, um, between the governor's coun- the governor, the governor's council, and local politicians is, has worked well. Just because other cities do it differently doesn't mean that we're wrong and they're right. The, I agree with everybody with the, you know, the poss- possibility of corruption. At the last meeting that I attended, I mentioned that when my dad was police commissioner, someone, one of the people who worked for him at Sanders, came in and asked to get a parking ticket fixed. And if you know my dad, he said, "Absolutely not, and pay it yourself."
One minute.
Um, so, that's a very minor point and that, that can be extrapolated into, hey, I did you a favor, how about you do me a favor? And obviously, the Sanders driver had not really done my dad a favor, so he wasn't going to put up with that kind of nonsense. But it's important to-
Thirty seconds.
Oh, sorry. It's important to keep that distance. It works, why change it? But yes, we need more women, and absolutely, let's get some more women on there. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Hey, I don't see anyone else with their hands raised, so we're going to move on from public comment to communications requiring final approval.
Communications been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding twenty-two-month contract to install and monitor four flow meters within the wastewater collection system in the amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, funded from account five-three-one-zero-seven Architect and Engineering Services.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes, I move to accept place on file and approve the two-year contract to install and monitor four flow meters within the collection system. Uh, flow is, uh, two, flow assessment of Auburn, New Hampshire, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Funding will be through Department one-sixty-nine Wastewater Fund. Uh, the fund is the wastewater, account classification fifty-three, professional services. By roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding construction engineering for phase two of the pump station upgrade project in the amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars from account eight-one-seven-zero-zero, infrastructure improvements.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Madam President, I motion to accept place on file and approve the contract with Delphalese Corporation of Drakehead, Mass. In an amount not to exceed five million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars for construction of the pump station upgrades phase two project. Funding will be through Department one-sixty-nine Wastewater, fund, surf loan, activity, pump station upgrade phase two, by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Lou?
Thank you. Um, I hadn't noticed when I reviewed, uh, the agenda. Are we approving the five million or are we approving the four hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred? I, I missed that disparity, uh, in my research. I apologize for-
Mayor, can you answer that?
Uh, that's for the engineering, four hundred twenty-seven thousand.
What she's asking is if we're approving that or the five-point-three million?
It's the engineering, the four hundred twenty-seven thousand. The reason it's here is it's a multi-year contract.
Should the motion be amended?
I don't think so.
It's a not to exceed price, it's, it's included in that amount. You all set, Alderwoman Lou?
Well, my, well, I'd like to request that the motion, uh, be amended to reflect what we're doing. Is it a five-year contract at four hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars per year? I, I just, uh, I'm, I'm glad I caught this myself, uh, I mean, at this point, but would any of my peers just suggest that I, that I missed something in reading the paperwork?
Actually, we're approving both, I think. You're right.
Is this something that could be, uh, deferred till next, um, meeting?
Yes.
Well, then I would like to request that we do that.
So you're going to move to table this?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion is to table. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero nays.
And that motion carries, and that communication is tabled.
Communication has been received from Alderwoman Elizabeth Lou regarding request for quarterly schedule of upcoming contract renewals.
So I had a discussion with Alderwoman Lou about this. I, I would like to refer this communication to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Alderman Lou, Alderwoman Lou?
Um, thank you, um, Madam Chairman. If, if, would it be okay for me just to speak briefly on it? I may not be able to make that meeting.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to clarify that, um, the letter that I sent to the, the board, um, referred to, um, quarterly reports. I, what I really meant is, then I said, or lists. I, I'm only, um, suggesting that we receive lists of upcoming contract expirations. Um, the word reports sounds comp- sounds like it may be a complex task, um, and I didn't mean it to be so. I had expect, I expect that the administration keeps a ticker file of, um, upcoming contract expirations, and that's all, all I'm, uh, requesting or proposing, that we receive a list of the items that will be coming up in three months' time for our review. Thank you.
Okay, so I will send this along to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Thank you. Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Harriet Young of twenty-nine Musket Drive, Nashville, to the Hunt Legacy Trustees for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed. Lori Wilshire, President of the Board of Aldermen. And to the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed William Slavinsky, the forty-six Berkeley Street, Nashville, to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and Jean-Paul Boucher of Eight Fox Meadow Road, Nashville, and Rob Shah of Fourteen Suite, Williams Circle, Nashville, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for terms to expire September eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed. Submitted by Mayor Jim Donches.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the Board of Aldermen, and the mayor has read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of July seventh, twenty-twenty-one, Finance Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the July twenty-sixth Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the August second, twenty-twenty-one, Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments, Airport Authority. There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Joe Duquette, thirty-eight Hills Ferry Road, Nashville, to the Airport Authority with a term to expire August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Is Joe, Mr. Duquette here this evening?
I am.
Come up, you'll get the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the National Airport Authority, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help you God.
I do.
Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following to the, to the Arts Commission. New appointment Carol Robey, 9 Mendelson Drive, Hollis, with a term to expire August 31st, 2024, and the reappointment of Tina Cassidy, 36 Owling 10th Street, Nashua, with a term to expire September 1st, 2024. Is either Carol or, um, sorry, Tina, either of those people here this evening? Not seeing them, they will be sworn in at a later date.
Board of Registars.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Gwen Michaeloff, 11 Apple Tree Green, Nashua, to the Board of Registars with a term to-
She left.
-expire December 31st, 2021. Is Gwen here this evening?
She was, she missed, she left, because she was sitting on her first row.
Thank you. She, uh, she will be sworn in at a later date.
Business and Industrial Development Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Business and Industrial Development Authority. Bradley Veer, 547 Amherst Street, Nashua, with a term to expire September 30th, 2023. Jason Haviland, 29 Todd Road, Nashua, and Deborah Navotny, 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, with terms to expire September 30th, 2024. Are any of those individuals here this evening? No, they will be sworn in at a later date.
Capital Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Capital Improvement Committee. Larry Zatella, 31 McDonald Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire August 1st, 2022. Charles Budris, WeShelly Drive, Nashua, and Scott Leclair, 10 Day Lily Drive, Nashua, both with terms to expire August 1st, 2023. Are any of the aforementioned here? Come forward, please.
You raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the National Capital Improvement Commission, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help you God.
Very good.
Thank you.
Been on CIC for the 36th year right now. I do my best at all times. Hopefully, I can continue to be normal up in the age. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Citizens Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Beth Quorm Toddham, 14 Ellis Drive, Nashua, and Elizabeth Hood, 12 Old Field Road, Nashua, both with terms to expire October 1st, 2024. And I don't see either of them in the audience tonight. They will be sworn in at a later date.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following reappointments from alternate to to a full member to the Board of, to the Conservation Commission. Jedediah Crook of 52 King Street, Nashua, with a term to dis- to expire December 31st, 2021. I don't see Mr. Crook here this evening, he will-
I'm on the Zoom.
Oh, you're on Zoom, oh.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Crook.
Good evening.
We will have Corporation Council swear you in.
Mr. Crook, if you'd raise your right hand.
I, I am.
Very good. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Conservation Commission of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sorry, I missed you.
Cultural Connections.
There being no objection, I, I will confirm the following reappointment to the Cultural Connections Committee. Amanda Martinez, 45 Concord Street, Nashua, with a term to expire May 1st, 2024. I don't see Amanda here this evening, so she will be sworn in at a later date.
Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following reappointments to the Downtown Improvements Committee. Edward Hayes, 137 Main Street, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31st, 2022. Michael Buckley, 207 Main Street, Nashua, with a term to expire January 31st, 2024. And Danielle Skelly of 175 Main Street, Nashua, with a term to expire June 1st, 2024. Are any of those individuals here this evening? They will be all sworn in at a later date.
Hunt Memorial Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointment to the Hunt Memorial Board of Trustees. Tammy Crisp, 7 Bartlett Ave, Nashua, with a term to dis- to expire December 31st, 2025. And I don't see Tammy here in the audience, so she will be sworn in at a later date.
Planning Board.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following reappointment to the Planning Board. Adam Barley, 3 Scotia Way, Nashua, with a term to expire March 31st, 2024. Is Adam here this evening? See him, okay, he will be sworn in at a later date.
Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board. Michael Serrato, 4 Water Street, Nashua. Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, 229 Main Street, Nashua. Eric Drewart, 52 Main Street, number 206, Nashua. David Fredette, City Treasurer, 229 Main Street, Nashua. Chris Lewis, 670 North Commercial Street, Manchester. Sarah Marchant, Community Development Director, 229 Main Street, Nashua. Tia Phillips, 2 Clock Tower Place, Nashua. And Angelina Spilios, 15 Technology Way, Nashua. All with terms to expire September 30th, 2022. Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, so for this committee, um, I understand that, uh, the members need to be, uh, have some association with the tax incremental, uh, financing districts. And I'm just asking about Mr. Lewis, who lives apparently in Manchester. Does he have, uh, property, or is he a tenant in a TIF district?
He, he's the architect for Brady Sullivan, who owns Lofts 34, so they've, you know, asked him to participate on their behalf.
Okay, is that, uh-
And that is within the-
Within the ordinance?
You all set, Alderwoman Lou?
Uh, I just, um, had asked, is that within the ordinance, um? Oh, let's forget it.
I think so, but we'd have to look exactly at the ordinance. But, you know, the, um, uh, to say otherwise, you'd have to get Brady or Sullivan, you know? And, uh, an employee of theirs is, I'm sh- you know, I expect acceptable under the ordinance. Uh, Tia Phillips is an employee of Clock Tower. She doesn't own it.
I'm familiar with the others. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think any of those individuals are here to be sworn in this evening.
I'm here on Zoom.
Oh, I'm very sorry, yes.
That's okay. No problem.
Okay, the city attorney will swear you in.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire and the rules and regulations of the City Charter. So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following reappointments to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Mary Ellen McKay, 9 Webster Street, Nashua, with a term to expire September 11th, 2024. And Estasia Boras, 44 Balcom Street, Nashua, with a term to expire October 1st, 2024. Are either one of them on, on Zoom? No, they will both be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished Business Resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 2016, amending the purpose of a fiscal year 2020 unlike escrow for the Community Development Division.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for indefinite postponement of R 20016 by roll call. I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, um, this was carried in the Budget Committee on the table for almost a whole year. And is OBE. Um, so we're getting into doing the same type of thing for the 2021 budget. So this needs to be indefinitely postponed.
You've heard the motion, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 ayes and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 20-16 is declared indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of Resolution R 21143, proposing an amendment to the City Charter relative to the manner of appointments to the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for final passage and speak to it.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, so when I, and originally endorse this, um, it was because, uh, it seemed straightforward to me that this was a decision we should put before voters, and that is largely the extent of where my support for it was. Um, through Aldermanic discussion, it became clear that there was strong police objecti- objection to it. Um, and that a lot of the concern was that this was not well thought out. It was not, uh, pre-considered or pre-baked. Um, it wasn't run by the Board of Aldermen or even the Police Commissioner before it made it to the agenda. Um, but I can't disagree with any of those comments, but I can say that that's not typically how a lot of our other, um, ordinances are managed. Um, typically, you get the sponsor of the, the bill contacting you, giving you a rundown of what their intentions are and what their plans are. You decide whether you're gonna endorse it yourself. And then at the Alderman meeting, you have a chance to raise your hand and say, I'm gonna endorse, I'm gonna sponsor, um, whatever direction you want to go in. Um, this was introduced in May, in our first board meeting of the month. Um, so it hasn't really come in under the cover of night or been rushed through or any of these kind of things. We did sit on it until July, when we actually had a Personnel Administrative Affairs meeting that we could refer it to. So our hands aren't particularly spotless in this either, if there is the claim that this is being rushed through. Um, when we did have the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, um, there was considerable police, uh, concern raised. Um, we tabled it in favor of creating a committee to explore the issue. Um, and that committee, there was no announcement or follow-up that I was aware of made until the actual next meeting. At that point, we talked about it. We determined that while there had been something of a commitment to make a committee, what had actually happened was that the individuals forming the committee had approached the mayor and used it as a bargaining chip and said, can you retract a petition? There it gets unclear, because a lot of the conversation that's been happening seems to be hearsay, where people are talking about people rather than two people. So I'm not entirely sure, um, what the exact dynamic was there. But I do know that then, when we did agree to finally form a committee, it was this afternoon that I received full confirmation that a committee was in process and that things were happening. So I think there has definitely been a lot of confusion and a lot of back and forth, uh, conversation. And again, rhetoric about people rather than discussion with people, um, which is unfortunate. So I think, as I felt in the committee, this needs to move out of the Aldermanic cycle, whether it's moved forward to the people or whether it is indefinitely postponed and a committee is, uh, assigned to review it. The petition is operating independently of what's going on in the Board of Aldermen. Um, and I, uh, support the petition as it stands because I do think that this is a decision that should go before the people. I don't see, uh, any likelihood that that's gonna happen under this particular board. Um, and I think the record stands for that. We could have moved on this much sooner. We could have had more discussions about amendments or changes to it over the three months that we've had it, but there haven't been any concrete proposed amendments. What's really been proposed is this should never have happened or this will happen no matter what anybody says. So I think this, this particular piece, we need to vote on it tonight. Um, I am grateful to the President for creating a committee. Um, it includes one of the original sponsors of the, um, the bill, so I, I think there's no claims that can be made of it not being fairly distributed. Um, and I think it is an opportunity for us to explore this more closely, get input, and figure out a better plan. Regardless of what's gonna happen on the petition, because I, as an Alderman, I have, my understanding is I have no say over, um, the rest of the petitioners signing it or what the process is beyond that. Um, I think we should just focus on creating the discussion group and then making a decision tonight, one way or the other, as to where people stand on it.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you, you know, tonight, we went through, I don't know how many appointments to committees. How many? Fifteen, twenty? We do this process all the time. The name is proposed, comes to the full board, it goes to the Personnel Committee. They vet the person and they make a recommendation. It comes back to us and we make a decision. This isn't, this isn't rocket science. This is very, very well thought out and well done for, forever. I don't see a problem with this. Since this, this was not my idea. This was not my plan. Uh, when it came forward, I thought of a lot of good reasons for us to do this. A lot of really good reasons for this to happen now. But I haven't signed the petition that's going around. I'd rather see this come through us because I think we understand what needs to be done. But since, since this came forward, I am just wowed by the optics of what's going on. Um, we, we know that we have a sitting member of the board We know that we have a sitting member of the board whose husband was reassigned to the commission after she was elected. We didn't know anything about this. We did not know. Now, I don't think there's any problem with that, but we should have known that information. A member of our board was vilified at one of our opportunities to testify for going before the commission to discuss a problem that he saw. That's not right. This should be something we have the right to do. This is our commission. It doesn't belong to the police, it belongs to the city. It belongs to the city, the citizens who live here. The optics are really ugly on this, and I don't understand why it has to be political and why it has to be angry. I think we can make good decisions for the city, and if we're finding that we can't do it because we just can't agree, then the citizens have a right to make a petition. And whether or not it passes, I don't know. I know my husband won't vote for it. He didn't like the idea. I don't know if I'll vote for it. But I don't think that we should just slam the lid on this. I think this is something that really, it's a great idea, and I think it's time. Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome. Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to start my comments by clarifying some thoughts sent to me by supporters of this legislation. I have never said that it's a viable concern, if a viable concern arises regarding the city charter, that it shouldn't go on the ballot to be decided by voters. Concern has always been that due diligence should be followed to determine first, if something has risen to the level of concern in the city to require a charter change, and second, that due diligence is followed to determine the correct wording to appear on the ballot to ensure people know exactly what they're voting on. We have this action coming back to us from the Personnel Committee with no recommendation after being tabled for one month. After lengthy discussion in that committee with excessive public comment, it was suggested that a committee be established by the Board President, who would then study this question to determine if this legislation deserves to be put on the ballot and what the correct wording should be. It was also generally felt that since there was no glaring faults with the current procedure, that this action should not be rushed onto this off-year election, where turnout is historically low. It was felt that waiting to the mayoral election in November of 2023 might be more prudent. Changes to a city charter should reflect a glaring error in the current process and procedures in the city charter on this subject. Now, I fully understand that there are some in the chamber that believe the current process is incorrect and needs to be tweaked, but no one has put forth any immediate concerns that the process is causing current negative impacts to the city of Nashua that require an immediate change. Have the police commissioners caused Nashua to have a bad police force? Quite the contrary is tested to by all the supporters of this action. Have the commissioners taken any action that negatively reflects on the citizens of Nashua? None that I'm aware of. Have they taken any actions that dictate an immediate change to the current process of appointment that if not immediately fixed, will have a severe and negative impact on Nashua and our police force? I think the answer is no. If we follow through with a committee to thoroughly investigate the question, hear testimony from all parties, and make a fact-based decision on a path forward, that is what I would recommend. I ask that this motion be tabled and a committee formed, and that the committee immediately commence their work. The rush just onto the ballot right now is not prudent and not the way we should be conducting business at a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Point of order, Madam President. Did Alderman Dowd make a motion to table, which is a higher motion, and should not be discussed and should be called for a vote?
Did you make a motion to table, Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Motion is not debatable. Would the Clerk please call the rolls?
Alderman O'Brien.
Madam President, point of order.
Alderman Jettie.
So you sent us a memo that was put on our desk tonight, saying that you formed a committee relative to this resolution.
I did.
So I'm wondering what the effect of that is. Does your committee, the appointment of your committee, is it dependent on this resolution?
I believe the current motion is undebatable and is to table.
Yes.
He wants to know if the, what we're tabling.
It's a point of order.
It's a point of order.
Your question-
The committee's not part of the motion.
Really isn't, should be having a conversation.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alderman. I'm making a point of order. I have the floor. The President can either answer it or refer it to Corporation Counsel, but I don't think it's your right to give your opinion about the point of order question I've asked.
I was explaining the motion on the floor.
You're asking if that piece of legislation is contingent upon having this committee review it? I am not sure exactly what your question was.
My question is whether your appointment of a committee relative to this resolution is dependent on this resolution. So if this resolution were defeated, would your committee then cease to exist, or would your committee continue? What was your intention in appointing the committee?
My intent in appointing the committee is to give all sides of the issue, not just one person's side of the issue. It would be to set up board meetings, to get input from the community, to have a dialogue. I mean, that can still happen, even if this petition goes forward. I mean, people need to know what they're voting on. I think the information that's out there is one-sided. That's what I was hoping to get from this committee, is dialogue, communication with the citizens.
Okay, and could I ask another point of order? So what would be the effect of tabling this? I know that our terms end at the end of this calendar year. So with this, if this motion, if this resolution is tabled and nothing happens before the end of the year, would it then expire? If I could ask you or Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, if it's still tabled at the end of this term, yes, it would go away. It would have to be reintroduced at the next board, with the new board coming in.
Thank you.
Welcome.
President Wiltshire, I just have an objection to your, to the motion to table, and that is that, in my opinion, I don't think an alderman should give a long speech and then move to table. I think that should be out of order.
Anybody can table. Anybody can make a motion to table. I don't know. We can take a vote on it, and if the votes know, the votes know. Motion before us is to table. So why don't we take a vote on that motion before we have too much discussion that's not really allowed? Please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 6 yeas and 8 nays.
That motion fails. So the motion before us is to recommend, it's for final passage of Resolution 21143. Alderwoman Lou.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I mean, Madam President, thank you. You've been telling me that for about two years now. At this point, I'd just like to repeat what I have said once before, but in speaking with some of my colleagues, it didn't come out clearly. So I want to be certain my point is understood. I do think that this initiative was rushed, and I disagree with Alderman Lopez. The way that it was rushed was in the first meeting, its first hearing, when members of this board clearly questioned whether we had to vote on the necessity. And that necessity voted, vote prompted a public hearing to be scheduled, and that was how it was rushed. I understand that the Personnel Administrative Meeting was canceled the next month, but to, to my mind, it's possible, well... But the fact that that was canceled only put the discussion further into the year to the, so that there would be less open discussion by the time it came necessary to schedule, you know, on the ballot, if that's what happened, was going to happen. And so I do believe that by improperly counseling us at that time, this got rushed through when a more accurate answer would have allowed us to fully talk about it among ourselves and before we had claimed it was necessary and before we had asked the public to come with the information that they then had and state their perspective. I think it was wrong to do it. I feel that that rushed the process. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I think back in Nashua's history, in the last 30 years, of the referendums that we've had on the ballot for various things, whether it be to change the charter or ask the public opinion. You know, we had, the most infamous of them all was probably the spending cap. It had the largest ramifications. But even that issue, that issue wasn't rushed, that issue was discussed. It was vetted, and it was voted on by the people of Nashua. Think about the Broad Street Parkway. That issue was discussed well. There was plenty of community meetings. You know, Mayor Davidson at the time put that through with the Board of Aldermen, and that was a referendum that passed. Things changed. I was elected on the board. I tried to get another referendum on that. But again, it was something that, a topic that had been discussed for years and years and years and years. The other, you know, moving forward, we had another charter change to the spending cap. That was a citizen petition. That one was vetted and discussed in the community as well. And that went forward and actually was on, I believe, the presidential ballot, and that passed. You know, and then more recently, the Performing Arts Center, we put on the ballot. And while that was a last-minute decision to put that on the ballot, the issue itself had been discussed in the community for almost a year, or longer. And so whenever we go to put something on the ballot, it should be something that we've had a lot of communication on, that there's been a lot of discussion in the community, that there's been ideas thrown out there for different, you know, ways forward that are the best ways forward. When you think about the Performing Arts Center, we had studied that for, I think, for over a year, maybe two years, looking at different venues and things like that. And finally, the Board of Aldermen came to, let's do the Alex Shoe Building. And finally, that was, you know, put forward to say, is this something we want to do? And, you know, really, this proposal here hasn't had the same kind of vetting. You don't have the participation of the community. You certainly didn't have the aldermen being able to come up and listen to their constituents and propose different amendments to maybe address some of the concerns that are coming forward. So I wanted to get on the record that, you know, I completely support your commission, President Wiltshire. I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to promote transparency. I think it's going to bring the parties together. I think it's going to bring the police, it's going to bring the aldermen, concerned citizens, business owners to the table to discuss what the issues are and where we need to go with this. And so, you know, I won't be supporting moving this forward for those reasons, because I think that there is more community dialogue to be had on this. And I hope that the folks in the community will want to vet and get a better proposal. Not saying that, you know, that we're not going to propose the change from having the Governor's Council appoint this to some sort of local control, but what it is saying is, we need to discuss what the best option is. And in my view, we don't have the best, we're not putting forward the best option to the community here, because we haven't engaged them to discuss that. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting, I won't be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Further discussion. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm sympathetic to the arguments on both sides of this issue, but I come down very similarly to Alderman Clemmons. In particular, with the current legislation as it's written, I think there are changes and improvements to be made to the Police Commission, and I think it's the intent of this legislation to include more diversity, both in gender and in race, is, I think, a goal a lot of us probably share on this board. But the language that's included in this that says that, you know, the Police Commission shall reflect the citizenship of the city, could mean very different things to very different people. So, you know, again, that leaves it up to the Board President and the current mayor, whoever the mayor is, making those appointments, to define what that means. I think we could have a much broader community discussion about, you know, how we would like to see, you know, what types of people we would like to see on the Police Commission, because the Police Commission does serve a very, very important role in the direction of our Police Department. It'd be great, I think, if there were more women on the Police Commission. There may be more officers, there may be more female officers who are in leadership positions at the Nashville Police Department, which would be fantastic for our city. And similarly, more people of color who are part of the leadership team at the Nashville Police Department. And that's not saying anything about the current or previous commissioners, but I think that's just a reality. So I'm hoping that this committee can strengthen and improve the proposal. The other thing I worry about is that I do think this has started a conversation, and we have a chance to make some positive changes. However, if this goes on the ballot, I do not believe that there's broad community support for this as it's written right now. I'd be concerned that if this proposal goes on the ballot and fails, and that kind of kills momentum that we've started here. So I would thank Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Karen, for her stewardship of this, because I believe she did try to work and work within the timelines, because we know there's, this is something that has to probably be approved tonight in order to try to get on the ballot. So I believe that she did the best that she could. Our procedural vote to vote that it was necessary from the beginning, I think, was a reflection of that understanding of the tight timeline, if this was going to be a viable proposal. So I'm hoping we, as a community, can continue to talk about this and come up with something that's even stronger and get it on the ballot in two years. Thank you.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to first clear up something, a comment that was made, nobody was named, but when there was a comment that was made about an alderwoman had admitted to hand in crafting the citizens' petition. I guess in some respects, that's kind of true, but really only half of the story. I'm assuming that it was me, as I helped work with the original that is before us now, which is what the citizens are using. So I have had no crafting in the citizens' petition per se, and the person who spoke has not had a conversation with me, so I'm not quite sure. I know that I did not say that to him, so it couldn't have been misinterpreted. The other comment about our Kalia accreditation, I think it's wonderful that we have it. We are one of 13 with Kalia accreditation throughout our state. If I've read the Kalia website right, we have Claremont, and Dover, and Durham, and Gosston, and Hollis, and Hudson, Keene, Laconia, Manchester, much larger than Nashua, Pelham, Portsmouth, the Stafford County Sheriff's Department, and the UNHPD. There are six that are self-assessed, Bedford, Hanover, Londonderry, Newington, Salem, and Stratum. Again, most of those are much smaller than Nashua, but Salem is quite up there, as is Londonderry, but they are self-assessed. The reason why that I really felt that this was important and to the comments and- and that was made about whether or not there was a, a real need, an emergency and so on, I'm not so sure that there's an emergency with our current commission or anything of that nature, but there is an emergency throughout this state. I've repeated that I sit on the municipal and county government. We've had a lot of bills that have come through that are trying to take away more and more power from the municipalities. One of them was defeated and that was what they call a CACR. That is basically a change to our state constitution. And that would have changed drastically what Nashua would have the right to do. It, I don't have it in front of me and I tried looking at it, thought I had printed it out and I don't have it with me. But basically what it said was that it would strip the city or municipalities right to make any kind of changes for the well-being and health of its citizens. That little provision that put in there, I know why they wanted to strip it out, it was because Nashua put in a mask mandate. That's one of the main reasons. And that was talked about over and over and over again in the committee. That is just one of many, many bills that are coming through. So while I don't see any, you know, structural malfeasance of, of any kind of issue within our, our, our current Police Department or our current commission, I see horrible things coming down the road from Concord. And that's not a political statement, that's just the way that things run in the state of New Hampshire. When one group wants to make one change, then out comes another group to make a change. And we go back and forth and I call it the, the ultimate tennis match with the citizens of, of New Hampshire. I don't agree with it, but it's a way that it happens. When I saw that happening and being on the committee that I'm on up in Concord, I really got nervous. I really got anxious. This was not the first time that I had brought up the possibility of making this change. When I, as I stated before, when I became a freshman Alderman, I brought it up. The word no came out very quickly and being a freshman, I was not going to basically buck the system, so to speak. I didn't have enough knowledge and I'm smart enough to know, sit back, listen and then ask a lot of questions. Well, I'm in almost my fourth year of being an Alderman and my fifth year of being a state rep. I've sat back, I've asked questions. And while I have apologized to the chief for not having gone to him and spoken to him about this ahead of time, he is absolutely right, I did not do that. But I did mention it to the Board President as it was happening, not prior to it happening, but as it was happening this time around. So for those who feel that I did not go and talk to them, I will publicly be on the record to apologize, but I will not apologize for putting this forward. I think it's good, I think it's important, and I think based on what's happening in Concord, it is time. It is scary times and I don't want to lose any more control. I want to get whatever control we can get. Someone said to me, well, why don't we get control of the, the school district? That's run by Concord. That's run by Concord for the entire state, not just Nashua. This one is just Nashua. So while I cannot disagree with many of my colleagues on the, the other side, I do think it's time. I'm sorry that they felt like they didn't have a voice on it. And I do want to make one comment also about the concerns of that committee. I love the, the group that's on there, I think they're all very wise, reasonable people, but I was concerned, Madam President, with your comment about the other side. I know you didn't mean that, I think you just meant that you wanted each of the wards to hear both sides of the story. And I just want to make sure that that was clarified, because I know you would not say the other side, meaning that you were just going to be talking about one side. I know you would be talking about both sides, so I just want the public to understand that.
Talking about sides of the issue, not...
Right, both sides of the issue, so yes, I appreciate that. And I think I've had more than enough time to, to speak and thank you so much.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to basically say this, I'm very proud to be a member of this, this Board of Aldermen, heard many complex issues that were basically discussed over the years. And I think, yes, several different things did go before the vote, voters on referendum. And one of the bills I just recently wrote too, was to have the public take a look again at the, at the gambling issue that's coming up on the referendum. And why did I do that is because sometimes even the voters get confused. And we've kind of felt, I think collectively, because it was passed unanimously, to put it back on to the ballot. So to say who is really the smart or, or anything, nobody really is. We really all, including the public, us on the Board of Aldermen, tried to do our best. And in Nashua, we're, our governing body is one that we vet the issues completely, pro and con, put it right out on the table. We're not like another smaller town where we got to have warrant articles or anything else like that. I don't know what it's called, an SB two town or something like that, but, you know, to come out. We're capable and we're duly authorized to have those discussions. I think we could have had this discussion. My main complaint with this, why I'm not going to support it, it's not that I'm against the idea a hundred percent. I have my own ideas, but the problem I have, I have no avenue to bring my ideas forward, not to have a discussion. And I personally do feel a little bit slighted. And as an Alderman at large, I kind of think it's kind of taken away a little bit of my authority or my capabilities of being on the board. I would like to thank the, Madam President, I'd like to thank you. I think you did well to come up in a bipartisan or in, in trying to, you know, olive branch between the different factions that do exist on this particular matter, to bring up a commission. Because we have heard from the police chief and he says, all he wants is the same thing that I want, an opportunity to come and that we completely vet the issue. But it's not going to happen, it seems, and I'm not counting the noses, but it seems like it's going to go right to the ballot. Fine. And I'm sure the people can make a decision, but I feel slighted that I was elected to make the hard decisions and I'm not willing to pass that along. I'll stand here in the trenches and have those debates and make the tough decisions, what I feel is best for the citizens of Nashua. So therefore, I am not going to support this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. This has been a, a difficult issue. When I first heard about it, I thought it sounded like a good idea. I know I was liaison to the Police Commission, not the past two years, but the two years before that. And, you know, I, I attended all of their meetings. I, I can't say that I, you know, that I found fault with anything that the Commission was doing. I thought the Police Department was well-run and I couldn't find any, any great fault. I did think that, you know, I think, I think this is true of all of our, well, many of our commissions, the, the people who end up serving, you know, whether it's the Commissioners or the Liaisons, you know, we get to know the, the Police Department, the police officers, they're, they earn our respect and, and we appreciate them and we, it's easy for us to become not so much overseers of the, in this case, the Police Department, same could be said of the Fire Department. You know, we, we, we tend to become, you know, less overseers and more, you know, cheerleaders or advocates for, for them, because we, you know, we get to know them and we respect them and we, we, you know, we ended up, we end up advocating for them. You know, I thought, you know, the, you know, I think, you know, the Police Commissioners, you know, from my observation, you know, there could have been more, you know, held a tighter rein over them financially, but, you know, they say that they did. I didn't, you know, that, you know, that there's a lot that goes on that's not, that's not seen. But, you know, we Aldermen have the ultimate control over the finances. And, you know, we voted, you know, to give the, the, the Police, you know, a couple of different unions increases in pay. And then this past budget thing, when the mayor vetoed the budget and we, we overrode his veto and supported the, the Police Department and the Fire Department. So we Aldermen have, have that final say, that final control and we can't blame it on them if, if we think they're spending too much money. You know, it's up to us to say, you know, to put a limit on it and, and the majority of us didn't. The, the other thing is the, you know, the Fire Commission is elected by the people, that's the ultimate local control. And they too, I think, become, you know, more, more advocates for the Fire Department and, and less, you know, provide less oversight. And when I think of the Fire Commissioners, I don't know about you, but I don't know how many times I've voted for the Fire Commission without really having a very good knowledge of who they are, who the people who are running. And so I'm not sure that, that, you know, electing the Commissioners is, is such a good idea. The thing that I've, I've noticed in this debate is that, you know, people have become very, very passionate about it. You know, the Police Department, the Police Commissioners, the people who support them, some of our fellow Aldermen have become very passionate in their defense of the Police Department and their insistence that, that there is no problem and that, that nothing should be changed. You know, it's been pointed out that in the past, you know, there was a situation where, where Aldermen were being investigated and they tried to end the investigation. You know, Chief Heffernan spoke to us in detail about that. I have a lot of respect for Chief Heffernan, Heffernan. But I've all, you know, I, I've thought about that case and that, that case was, you know, ended up not being a, a local prosecution, it was an, it was the FBI who prosecuted that case, it was a federal indictment. And it was, you know, the, the three Aldermen involved ended up pleading guilty and being convicted, you know, by a federal court. So I, I think the answer to avoid, you know, number one, you know, it's against the law to try to influence a, a police investigation. And if, if, if one of us tries to do that, the police ought to report us and charge us with, with a crime. If the police feel that, that, you know, the local control is going to subject them to interference, you know, that's one answer. The other answer is, you know, they can refer these investigations when it involves local people, they can refer it to the Attorney General's office. Let the Attorney General's office do the investigation, remove it completely from, from local interference. But, you know, something that, that the police talked to me about, that, that, that did resonate with me is the, the idea that their, you know, their recruitment, their selection of officers, their compensation of officers, the promotions, you know, all of that sort of thing is, is, you know, governed by the Commission. Of course, they've got the collective bargaining agreement that they've got to abide by. But, you know, you know, they say, you know, if, if there's too much, if, if the Aldermen are selecting the Commissioners, that, you know, they feel that there'd be interference there, you know, they may have a point there. So, you know, there are, there are pros and cons to this. The thing I want to make clear is that, you know, whichever side you're on, you know, please, it does, it does, it, it does not serve you well to try to read the minds of the people on the other side, people who disagree with you. To accuse them of having nefarious motivations does not serve you well. And I, and I hope that, you know, that both sides, as we, in the future, we all, we all remember that, you know, each of us has, you know, opinions and we have, you know, but we're all trying to do what's best for the city. You know, accusing the mayor of proposing legislation with, without going through the Aldermen first, well, that's the way it works, the Charter. The Charter says the mayor has the right to propose legislation, just as we Aldermen have the right to propose legislation. To say that the citizens are going beyond, you know, behind the backs of the Aldermen by, by starting a petition drive, well, that's their right, that's in the Charter. You know, the voters have the right to, to, you know, make a petition. The idea that, you know, that it hasn't been vetted enough, that, you know, I, I understand that argument, but, you know, how much time do you think it needs? This started in May, you know, we've had May, June, July, August, going to have September, October. Both sides can, can make their arguments to the voters. You know, I, I don't know why it would take a year or two to, to educate the public about this issue. So I, I, as you can tell, I'm, I'm struggling with this, I see both sides. You know, I, I think that, you know, I, I, I have trouble taking this away from the voters, saying that, you know, when I, when I hear an Alderman say that, that he hasn't had a chance to really do his job, well, this has been hanging around since May. You know, the committee, you know, any of us, and some of you did, some of you who are not on the committee went to the committee meeting. We all had the opportunity to go to the committee and express our opinions. If we feel that this may be a good idea, but it could be improved, we could have gone to the committee with our ideas and, you know, suggested amendments. But it seemed like there was, you know, the people who are, who, who didn't think this was a good idea were, you know, intent on, on not letting it proceed. So I, I, I guess I'm, I'm coming down on the feeling that, that, you know, the voters ought to have the opportunity to express their opinion. If, you know, if, if they, if, if they vote this, this down, there'll be other opportunities to, you know, if, if we want to change, you know, propose something that, that may be better in the future. But I, I guess I'm, I'm, you know, we're, we're not saying that, that this should pass by putting it on the ballot, we're just allowing the voters. And both sides will have, I think, ample opportunity to make their arguments directly to the voters and, you know, let the voters vote in, in November. So that's, I guess I've, I've decided I'm going to vote to allow this to go ahead. Thank you. Thank you for letting me think out loud once again.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just coughed one minute. Okay. So...
Okay. So, um, I am going to say things that I have said both times in personnel meetings. Try to keep it brief because I think many of the Aldermen have already done a good job of explaining, you know, the, the pros and cons here. I was initial co-sponsor to this bill. Makes sense to me on the surface that local control, we appoint everything else. And, you know, getting into a community conversation with the people who are involved, um, from the police department to neighbors, all of those things, I, it became clear very quickly, um, that everybody has different opinions on this. Um, and so, you know, a number of people on the board have alluded to the fact that we talked about having a, uh, working study group that would look at this and really have this full conversation. Regardless of how the spoke goes down tonight, regardless of whether it goes on the ballot, uh, by citizen, um, petition, which is their right. I believe strongly that this discussion is still worth having and I'm looking forward to, uh, really examining this and having a, a, a true vetted community conversation on this because, um, I think it's, it's a good time to have it. It, this could be the right piece of legislation. There, there could be, you know, an even better solution, um, that we could come to by bringing all, all parties to the table. So, I think the work study commission that has been put together has a great group of people from lots of different areas. Um, not just Nashua, not just the police, and, and everyone who's on there. You know, we've done a good job of balancing the conversation, so it's not going to be one-sided. Um, so I'm looking forward to having that conversation regardless of how anyone around this horseshoe votes, um, and, uh, whether or not goes on the ballot. But I, 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 I can tell passion has been used. I think there's a lot of passion around this on every, um, front and, um, I think I, I always appreciate that passion because that means that as a community, we're listening and thinking critically and coming to the table and asking, tough questions of each other. So, um, I'm can, I'm looking forward to a lively conversation in the work study group. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I, um, just wanted to state for the record that I haven't heard an Alderman, uh, express that they weren't open to exploring change. And I believe that that was, that that was insinuated by some previous speakers. And, uh, that's not the case. And, uh, I think that it's, um, disingenuous to say that, um, to say such a thing. Particularly when, uh, the group who is wanting the study group has been vocal in saying, let's put the brakes on this and look at what all of our options are. So I think that's, that's just an important clarification to get out there. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain that when I gave my initial comments and actually wasn't my intent at that time to table. And it was also never my intent to stop discussion on, on the, uh, on the motion. It was my intent to, um, allow the committee time to meet and, and discuss and come back to us with a report, before we took final action on this and, the only way I saw at the time was, um, to table it until the committee meets, not indefinitely and not till the end of the year. But the committee should start meeting and come to some conclusions. If we pass this tonight, the committee's going to come up with recommendations, but the, the horse is out of the barn and it's too late. If we really want to do this right, we should give the commission a chance to meet and come back with recommendations. I, I just don't think the current wording going on the ballot, uh, which I believe is pretty close to the wording on the private, uh,
Exactly.
It's exactly the same. Does not give the people voting on it enough information to make an informed choice. You know, it's, uh, somebody saying, we have to do this and, and people are following along with that. There have been a lot of things that have pointed out to me in the last few days that there are things that the commission needs to talk about. Put some, formulate some things together like, I, I know that several, a couple of the Aldermen anyway have had trying to put in legislation for changes to this. And I think the only way you can get to the, the correct approach to make changes is to have the commission meet, get all the facts together and make an informed decision. So that was, and the only way I saw to do that was to table it. I didn't want to table it and it actually and, and stop conversation on this. I was hoping that, that we would allow the commission the chance to meet and come back with, with positive recommendations. I think that's the fair and honest way to go to just throw this on the ballot. To me, is, is not the way we should be doing things.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, yeah, I just kind of was conscious of the fact that the public watching and maybe members of the audience aren't fully aware of the communication that we're all talking about with the commission. Um, so, I mean, in a summary, without naming all the people who were appointed to it, because there's a good spread, in my opinion, of citizens that, um, will be able to discuss it from the, um, from the voter's perspective. The commission that, I, and maybe I should just let you speak to it, Madam President? That'd be a better idea.
Speak to the-
And share the one who created the commission.
Right. And I did that so that all sides of the issue could be heard, so that, you know, the people that don't watch our meetings or don't, you know, don't get a knock on their door, that they get all the information they need. And that's basically what I'm hoping this commission can do, is just put out there all this, all, all the options, all the sides of this. Um, and, and if it goes on the ballot, it, it, why does it need to go on the ballot right now? What's the hurry? What's the rush? If it's a good idea now, why won't it be in two years when it comes up to the full municipal election? If it's a good idea, it will stand up for that, so.
So just to articulate to the public, the commis- commission being, not the commission, sorry, the work group being started, um, is to be chaired by, uh, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dowd would participate and the police would have, like, also representation. And then all of that is, there's a, like, six or seven private citizens? So this would not be a commission, or I gotta stop doing that, sorry guys. Um, this would not be a work group that is specifically representing only one side. It is well-rounded. It has the legislative support and authority to enact changes and, um, it has civilian representation and it has input from the police. So that was what my intention was, was just to point out to people who we might have been kind of talking around it because we have the document right in front of us. It's going to be attached to tonight's minutes. Um, but there is a substantive step being taken to further explore this. And then just speaking to my motion at the beginning, I think we're going to go around in circles with this at the Aldermen if we go anywhere at all, which is why I wanted to move for, um, final passage because that's my, my opinion, is that we should move it forward. I've been reading the room. I think I have a different calculus than Alderman O'Brien. And I don't necessarily think that my, my position or opinions are going to be representative of the whole board. But I still think we accomplish something by having a vote and, and making it clear where everybody stands on it. I think if we try adding more amendments at this point, it's likely not going to go on the ballot anyway because it would be such a change that it has to be, run through all the processes again. And we wouldn't have declared that it was necessary and, and followed that step back in May if we, if we hadn't known there was going to be a time crunch and we hadn't known that there were procedures to follow. So, I don't think that creating an amendment on the fly is particularly a good idea with something this important. I also don't think that, um, just leaving it on the table and, and floating is going to do anything other than keep it as a discussion item that can't be solved. I think that we should move this more to that work groups field and let them explore things. And with the knowledge that probably inevitably, anything that we're doing as Aldermen is going to require new legislation and it's going to have to happen in the next year. Because I don't think we'd be able to effect any change usefully in a timeframe that would allow it to go on the ballot. So, that was my thinking.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe we're over, over, complicating this issue. I think it's mu- much more simple than we're making it out to be. Five commissioners and the, the local control is, is, uh, very clear. I think it's ready to go on the ballot. I think that the people should decide. And I, I support this 100%. It's a change that needs to be made. It's, it's archaic and going back to the 1800s and it's just time for local control. And we need more local control on every issue concerning the city. So I'm 100% for it. I think it's time to vote on it. I think it's time to put it on the ballot.
Anyone else? Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Well, this has been quite interesting, um, experience here, sitting on this board, particularly with this. And as most, you know, have great respect for Nashville Police and particularly for our Chief of Police. However, some of the things that I've heard that came from the police department as well as on this board, I am truly shocked. And I sat in on, um, Alderman, Alderman Karen's meeting, um, the other night and really felt really horrible after hearing some of the comments that were made by people that I, on this board, that I truly respect, but would have never thought things of that nature would come out of their mouth. And I don't want to repeat them. You all know who said what on that meeting. Um, I take offense when people say that Alderman or the mayor is trying to derail things. I, I take offense when, um, we're told we're not doing our job. You know, I take offense when I know that people that I've spoken to, and I don't know if you've spoken to people, had no clue. They thought the commissioners were city control. So I don't know who you guys talked to or have spoken with. But I was really shocked to find out that so many people had no clue that the commissioners were chosen out of the state. So sometimes we're in a bubble. We don't really get to a lot of people that you really, really do need to get to. I'll also say that, um, no matter where I go, people are concerned. And most of the concern came, that I was hearing, came about the police department because for whatever reasons and things that were said, letters were written, um, people were just shocked that they thought that the police had something to hide. For me, that, that knows pretty much about the police department, no, I didn't feel as though things have, they, they had anything to hide. But I felt that how they approached the situation just made it worse, to be honest with you. And then how some of us approached the situation have made it worse. I personally like the idea of a commission of five. I like the fact that local control and as some of my colleagues that are in the State House as well, we talk constantly, we vote constantly about bringing things back to Nashua. So when we got so many complaints or not, I won't say complaints, but so many people that I care about disagree. And I'm saying to myself, you're disagreeing because you're afraid that someone's going to ask you to do something that, um, you should be saying no to, but you think that because who the person is, you don't have a choice, I have a problem, then that, if you're in that position, you shouldn't be in that position. Because if it's wrong, it's wrong. I don't care who you are. And you should be able to stand up and say, absolutely not. You're wrong. We're not going to do it. So to say that that's not likely what would happen, I have a problem with that. And those that know, I had the conversation, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Because I've had many conversations with the police department, with other board members as well. So, um, I just feel as though, um, I don't mind disagreeing with people and having fuss out. Chief Carrick and I do it all the time. But we come back in love. You know what I mean? There's a difference. But when I keep hearing these innuendos coming at this board, it really bothers me tremendously. So, um, I do believe that it needs to go to the ballot. And I do believe that national residents should make that choice. And I do believe that we still have time and people have been meeting with the police department and meeting with, um, other members of the board, I believe, and can't say that honestly, but I think, other members of the community that, that's jumped in to help out. A lot of people have been talking. And so don't say that people don't know what this is about because they truly do. They do know, without a doubt in my mind. But for you to say, um, we need more time, fine. Take the time you have to November or whenever the election is. Take the time to explain whatever you want to explain to whomever. Everybody can have a voice. But to stop the voice, I have a problem. So for that, I am going to be voting to move this forward.
Anyone else?
Part of, part of the problem I see is that, you know, we, we talk about people had no clue that, you know, these commissioners were appointed by the governor. Well, if people didn't know that, I think the purpose of putting together a work study group is to get all that information out there so people can make informed decisions. It, it's just, um, really no reason to rush this. It's going to be the lowest turnout of, of all elections, you know, with typically is very low turnout. I would ask the city clerk, but I hate to put her on the spot, but the percentage of people that come out to vote in a midterm is very low. And, um, I don't think that's giving the citizens enough voice. I think it should wait till the next municipal election after we've had a, an opportunity to speak to the community about their police commission and their police department. Alderman Jettie. Did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Alderwoman Lou, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, mention that the work study group could also, and I'm sure this is part of the plan, but I just wanted to say it or get it on record, explore ways that have been try, ways we've tried in the past to, um, make the board, uh, make the commission more diversified. Ways that haven't worked. And discuss ways that could work. So, the, um, idea was brought up initially, uh, with some particular, uh, other than the local control. It was also discussed the diverse, diversity piece. And that could be, um, explored as part of the work group. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Seeing none, the motion before us is by Alderman Lopez is for final passage of Resolution 21143. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenzo.
No.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
No.
You have six yays and eight nays.
That motion fails. Okay.
Alderwoman Shart.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Can I, can I move the table at this point? We still have to dispose of it.
Yep. Yes.
I moved to table.
Move to table. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 yays and one nay.
That motion carries. Resolution 2143 is on the table.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-152, proposing an amendment to the City Charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
I have a motion. Alderman Lopez.
So just before I make a motion, can I ask Attorney Bolton to clarify, if I motion for indefinite postponement, doesn't stop any other aldermen from commenting if they wanted to?
No.
Okay, just making sure. I want to move for indefinite postponement and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Lopez.
So out of deference to what Alderman Clemmons pointed out earlier, I didn't want to either A, make a long comment and then just move to table, or B, table right out of the gate and then not explain why. So my intention in proposing a charter amendment for the Board of Health was, it is a similarly aged institution. It provides for three physicians to oversee the health matters of Nashua, and I'm very much oversimplifying that, so I apologize to the board. But my intention was to add two more members to it to expand its quorum. This would allow members to have a little bit freer conversation, it would allow some redundancy. If someone couldn't make it, then it would allow them to still have a quorum and proceed with the meeting. I saw advantages to it, but I didn't really account for, number one, the timeframe for presenting it to the board itself. In having it proposed to me and moving it forward onto the Board of Aldermen, I managed to completely coincide with them going on break for the summer, so I wasn't able to present it to them first or in a detailed manner before it went to Personnel, Administrative Affairs. So I want to thank Alderman Karen for working with me to invite them to the Personnel, Administrative Affairs. The way the timing would have worked out is their, their regular meeting is tomorrow, so we would have, if she hadn't been so accommodating, we wouldn't have had the conversation before it went back to the, tonight, the full board. And if it didn't come back tonight, then it wouldn't have made a difference because it's not going to, it's not going to get on the ballot. So we had a healthy discussion in Personnel, Administrative Affairs. I kind of wanted to stick to it because the idea of having five versus three as a dynamic is something I'm very familiar with. I see most boards operating on that level. And because of the advantages it offers, that made sense to me. And then expanding it to include members who might be, might represent the psychology field as well, I added one, so an additional physician or individual with doctorate level psychology. I thought that was relevant to today's Nashua. We just literally had a special Board of Aldermen meeting right before this about being a recovery-friendly workplace. Issues of recovery and substance misuse are increasingly falling under the umbrella of public health. They're major issues that affect all levels of Nashua life. And then we also have issues that are not quite so well-understood or discussed. We have a lot of people who are committing suicide and we have a lot of people who are experiencing the trauma that comes from that. We have a lot of people who just went through a life-shattering or life-changing experience in 2020, where suddenly a lot of the behaviors and patterns that they were used to were pulled away from them and they were instead replaced with a period of uncertainty and competing narratives and a lot of stress. So again, it made a lot of sense to me to introduce somebody, at least the possibility that a specialist in the field of psychiatry would potentially be useful. And then my, the last element of this amendment would have let voters decide whether they wanted somebody with a public health background who didn't work for the city to be a member. And I think my intentions speak for themselves. I wasn't trying to replace any existing members, I was trying to expand the board, I was trying to improve its ability to train new members and manage the crises that we're experiencing. But I also think my timing was pretty awful, because not only did I plow into the, a similar amendment with the Police Commissioner being highly contentious, but the Board of Health is not the Police Department. They're not as big, they're not as, they don't get uniforms to clearly identify themselves to the public and give them the credibility that comes from, you know, centuries of law enforcement. Instead, they have to focus on their decisions having the weight themselves of credibility. So because of that, and because at the emergency meeting that we had last week, it was my impression that people who were seeking to undermine the credibility of the Board of Health were at the same time trying to use this as a wedge, I don't think this is a good time to mess with it. I agree with the comments that they've made, that they have an effective board right now. I think the timing would be unfortunate were the amendment to proceed to the voters, because then they would have to, if they continue to disagree, they'd have to approach voters, and that's not a fair position to put them in, in order to make their case. And if it did pass through the referendum, then that means that we would have to be looking at a change in a dynamic in the middle of winter, when we're likely still going to be dealing with after effects of COVID-19, hopefully after effects. So for those reasons, I want to support every, I want to thank everybody who supported me in terms of moving this forward. But I think the best thing at this point is indefinitely postpone it and then take it up in a future term where I am able to engage the Board of Education right out of the gate and make sure that, sorry, the Board of Health, right out of the gate and make sure that they fully support an amendment moving forward.
Okay. The motion before us is for indefinite postponement. Is there further discussion on the motion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yays and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-152 has been indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-155, relative to the transfer of $75,000 from Department 194 contingency.
I can't, Madam, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry, gone.
Someone has their speaker on.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-155, relative to the transfer of $75,000 from Department 194 contingency, account 70100, general contingency, to Department 198, inter-fund transfers, account 89725, transfer to City Retirement Trust Fund.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21-155 by roll call and like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, this is just a, a normal transfer of funds that we do. We put money in contingency and this particular one has to cover a retirement that's come up recently. So it is a normal transaction of city government.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21-155 by roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yays and zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 21-155 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There is none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-156, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into an option agreement with Harbor Homes Inc. for parking lease.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. First reading.
Madam President.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Alderman Cleaver had his hand up.
Okay, sorry about that, Alderman Cleaver.
Okay, it's hard to keep the Zooms in the room.
And Alderman Harriet Gathright, sorry.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-157, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the Bronstein redevelopment.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-158, establishing an expendable trust fund for recreation facilities for east side of Nashua, funded by appropriations and making a supplemental appropriation of $750,000 into the expendable trust fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Karen, and I will be at as co-sponsor too. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, and Alderman Cleaver. Sorry. Someday this Zoom will be gone and.
Thank you.
I won't miss you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, August 23, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-159, relative to the transfer of the fiscal year 2022 original adopted budget contingency for grants and corresponding offsetting revenue into a non-lapsing grant fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez. That's it. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, August 23, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-160, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $250,000 into expendable trust fund established for the Business Industrial Development Authority.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, August 23, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-161, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $621,556 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity, COVID-19 enhanced detection.
Close. Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-162, relative to the reappropriation of fiscal year FY 2022 escrows.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, August 23, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance O. 2168, moving the location of a no-parking zone on the west side of Concord Street at its intersection with Mount Pleasant Street.
Additional sponsors? Oh, I'm already on it, sorry. Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance O. 2169, removing the one-hour parking time limit on south side of Myrtle Street.
Additional sponsors? Oh, I'm already on it, sorry. Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance O. 2169, removing the one-hour parking time limit on south side of Myrtle Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance O. 2170, allowing permitted overnight parking on Myrtle Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up, Clarence Frost. Again, if you could please give your name and address for the record, and you'll have a three-minute timeframe. You've been very patient, thank you.
Hi, my name is Clarence Frost. I live at 63 Chestnut Street in Nashua. I didn't get an education on this debate you guys had going on the commissioner, I had no clue. But I'll need about Chestnut Street and the urban bike trail. I sent left pitches for people to see about the drunk and the drunken problems, and I've been looking at every day. I bought this property 23, 24 years ago. Wasn't as bad. Every year goes by getting worse and worse. I recommend, I called the police, I got pictures of people urinating. Show it to the police. What can they do? Tell them not to do it? They don't arrest them, and they're still there doing it. The other reason why I see it more today is because I'm on temporary disability. I ain't got a choice but to stay home and look at it every day now. When they did the urban renewal and redid Chestnut Street, they put a nice island at the end of my street. When they first did it, it looked great. I don't think it's been mowed, mulched, trimmed, nothing for the last five years. I fixed up the front of my property, which I was told I own the city all. I don't know who owns it, but I take care of it. There's a tree down the middle of Chestnut Street. Couple years ago, we had a big tree fall, take out power lines. Thank God it didn't hurt any children. But there's another tree right next to it, half of it's dead. When's the city going to take it out? When it takes out a house?
One minute.
Another power line for a child? I'm a taxpayer. I pointed out to my aldermen, even the ones in the past, and it seems like it never gets done. The tree streets get dumped on all the time. And I keep telling people, this neighborhood is what we make out of it. I decorated every Halloween and Christmas to give children some nice to look at. I just like the city and the aldermen to do something for their neighbor and not just say, it's another problem we've got to solve. The community's got to solve it too, but we can only do so much.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over on this side.
Alderwoman Mulcher.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I keep forgetting about Zoom, my head is not in it today.
I didn't sign up. I just wanted to thank the board for allowing the Board of Health to do their jobs. I'd also like to thank Tom, look forward to working with him and communicating more with him. Don't forget, we got a meeting tomorrow. But again, thank you very much. I promise you'll see less of me, but we will come to the board. We've been invited to. Alderman Schmidt, thank you for the nice email. Appreciate that, and all the rest of you that have helped. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Ordolano.
Hi, Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Just quickly, I sent you an email tonight and I attached a spreadsheet looking at the top 10 largest communities in New Hampshire relative to their police departments. And what surprised me is, and it really surprised me, I called all the departments and talked to the police stations. Five out of those 10 do not have commissioners. Three of the cities that the mayor highlighted as cities that had changed their commissions, Portsmouth and Maconia, those two municipalities have three commissioners, but they are elected by the general public. So five out of the 10 don't have commissioners. Three of the five left, they're elected by their citizens at the ballot. And Manchester has an appointed commission, but it is only advisory, it doesn't have its executive duties. So what's being proposed in Nashua is really unique to the other 10. And I would like, I obviously think this is going to go on the ballot and the mayor was, is going to get the signatures and the citizens behind providing the signatures to put it out there. But I would like to understand how he determined that the best option was to have the mayor and the president appoint and the board vote versus having a citizen vote. and the board vote versus having a citizen vote. And Berlin and Somersworth were also used as examples of communities that changed, but you are looking at massive size variations. 10,000 people compared to Nashua with 90,000. And the other thing you gotta take into consideration here, Manchester's 113,000 people, Nashua's 90,000, and then the next biggest is Concord at 44, and it rolls down. So, you know, we have to be very careful with blanket comments, and I looked back at the mayor's original survey, and the question he proposed is, and it was just his blanket survey to his fixed number of constituents, but it was, one, do you want the mayor and the board president to appoint the commissioners? Or two, do you still want it with the governor? I wish three had been on there, which is, do you want to elect them yourself at the polls on a staggered, staggered time schedule? I think it would, I would just like to understand how this happened. And honestly, I've been on an email chain that's, you know, 50, 100 comments deep. There's a lot of people that have asked some really good questions on that email chain about why we're doing this and what it means. So, huge opportunity to do some education over the next few months, and I think there's a lot of work to do here to educate people. Thank you.
Beth Scare?
Beth Scare, 111 East Tovar Street. Next week on the 18th is the 101st anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. And so this Saturday, the 14th, at 10:00 AM, I'm gonna be raising the 19th Amendment flag on the citizen flag poll. So that's 10:00 AM on Saturday, the 14th. Everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to give public comment? Seeing no one, remarks by members of the board. I'll start on this side tonight. Alderman Clay.
Thank you very much. Sorry. I'd like to start off by thanking all of my fellow members here for the dynamic conversation that we had on the police commissioner. I think a lot of good things were said. I also want to just comment to Alderwoman Lou that that was a good catch. It was for the 467. I went back and looked at the financials. So I think it was just wording, but that was a good catch, and thank you. We would've had to revote it again anyway, so I appreciate that. And, but most of all, I wanna congratulate Alderman Brandon Laws and Sophia on their new addition. There's no one that deserves more happiness than they do. And I know they're gonna make a great family, great parents, and I can't wait to see that little angel at some public function. I know she's loved, so thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
And just a real quick, I wanna give the board an update on the middle school project. Fairgrounds Middle School is almost complete. It's, will be completed in the next week or two, 100%, but I think if you go by there, you'll see a marked change. And Henochuck is coming along real well. We will have all of the hard construction hopefully buttoned up before school starts. All of the new roads are in, and if you've been by, you see there's the new temporary traffic light. That will be there for approximately a year. Next summer, we'll put in the regular mastarms and the final light as we widen the road to make all the road changes. And I can tell you that all the neighbors in the area are all in favor of the change, and I've met with them all personally, so I can tell you that for a fact. And the new middle school down the south end of Nashua, we have all the land we need for access to the school. We have the purchase and sale on our last little piece of land that we'll be having a closing fairly soon. And, and work will start in October, and the opening of the school will be September of '24. I just wanted to say also that Thursday, the 26th, which is gonna be a very busy day, the back-to-school event at the library is at 5:00. And the person sitting to my right is deeply involved in that. And she may mention more about it, but then after that, there's going to be a tour of Fairgrounds Middle School for the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Education. We'll break up into smaller groups, and they'll give you a tour of all the changes before the students actually go in and use the school. And then the Joint Special School Building Committee will be at 7:00 following those tours.
Alderman Karen.
You took my thunder. First of all, yeah, I was gonna remind you that the 17th Annual Back-to-School will take place at the library on the 26th of August. At the library, finally, we're back there. The 25th, which is that Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning, if anyone would like to come down, we'll be packing 1,500 bags in less than four hours. We will provide coffee and donuts in the morning, and then we will have a box lunch for everyone who participates. And we have a lot of fun. There's a lot of things to put in the bags, and the committee is working real hard to make sure that the word gets out. The only group that will be inside of the library will be the National Alliance Club, because they need a darkened room in order to do the eye screening. But I know the health department will be there to give the COVID vaccine. And all the schools and principals will be outside all around the library under tents. And we have about 32 to 35 vendors who will also be there giving out supplies and information concerning their different programs. So we look forward to it. We're hoping that we have a good day, and come on down and see how the city's working with the chamber and the school and our great businesses like Judge Katers, who co-chairs this event with Mary Ann Malizagola. On another note, I do wanna, I know how difficult this conversation was concerning the police department, but I think that we tried to let everybody hear what had to be spoken during personnel without getting too crazy. But as I have said before, in the last few years, it seems like people forget their manners and become rude and disrespectful to each other, whether it's the public or members of the board. And we certainly, none of us should think that way, because we're here for a reason. But the other thing that bothers me is, I'd rather have you say it to my face than to put it out there on social media where I don't hear, that I have to hear about it from somebody else. That's, that is worse than having you say something to my face, because then I know whether you're telling the truth or not. So there's a difference there between having a conversation and hiding behind a computer all day long and making comments. And that's, that's the sad part of what's going on in this, within the community. And I think that tabling this and trying to get the work-study group involved is very important. And as Alderman Dowd said, when you're making a charter change, it is not like a normal resolution or piece of legislation. It affects you long-term, because as you all know, we're not here forever. We're only here for a short period of time, and new people come in and wanna do things. So when you're making those big charter changes, you really need to have all the facts, whether it's you or the public. So I think that's important, that you hear everything and you do everything in a timely fashion. So just that. But Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a question to the mayor if... So, Mayor, I read an article in the Union Leader concerning the City of Manchester and the money they are receiving from the federal government to be utilized within their community. And they had a major survey throughout the community asking for the top 10 things they would like to see that money used for. And they came up with a plan. Part of it was infrastructure, housing, new housing, how to help the homeless. I know we're getting money. I don't think we're getting as much as Manchester, but have you given any thought of how you're, how we're gonna utilize that money or present it to the board for consideration? I know it's... You don't have to do a long detail, but I'm just wondering if, I was quite fascinated that Manchester had done that.
The answer is yes, and we've talked with them in a lot of detail, the people who formulated the Manchester plan. Now, one big difference is, of course, that they got, they can be much more, you know, sort of cover the waterfront, because they have $40 million, and we have 16. And until a few weeks ago, the budget had proposed that of the $8 million we'd get in year one, 4.4 million was going to be for revenue replacement, the law school aid. So leaving us 3 million compared to them 20 million. Now, in terms of the outreach, I mean, they, I mean, there were no community meetings or anything. I mean, you know, they took input through like the website or whatever. Maybe we should do something like that, but certainly, one, you know, we should, we plan to propose to you, the Board of Aldermen, a, as we get a firmer picture on how much money we really have available, given that we don't need so much for revenue replacement, how we should use the money.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, so first, I wanna thank former Alderman Siegel for attending. I think one of the comments that he made that might have been, well, I hope wasn't lost in the shuffle with regards to this board is, people who care about the city do have a right to comment on it and have a right to express opinions, particularly Alderman Siegel. I'm pretty sure I'm literally sitting in his seat right now. Has served the board and the City of Nashua, and he was always very diligent about researching his issues. He was definitely very passionate, but I always found him to be very fair. And the reason I wanna point out that comment is because there are different places where people gather in Nashua, whether it's here in the Aldermanic Chamber, or at the library, or online. And those forums have a responsibility to be very conscientious when it comes to how they manage. And if, it's in the guidelines specifically, for example, that they aren't going to take output from people who aren't in Nashua, that should be applied consistently. But a person shouldn't have their conversation rights pulled out from under them in the middle of a conversation, in fairness. I think if you're gonna allow that person to have a conversation at the beginning, you kinda can't just pull them out when their conversations become inconvenient. The way, the same way, some of the public comment here is very inconvenient. Tonight, for me, slightly, personally as well. But people have a right to speak, and they have a right to be heard. So I just wanted to offer that support. And then, in addition, I want to thank Mr. Frost, not only for his comments tonight, but he really has, like, that corner house has been well taken care of. It's an appreciated part of the community. They do a fantastic job decorating for Halloween, decorating for Christmas, and it really does lift up the city's surrounding neighborhoods and the city experience, because people use the rail trail to travel back and forth from work. Kids use it to travel back and forth from school. They see the investment he puts in the community, and that matters. I think we do have to match that. I think the rail trail that, as it is, is very tired, whether it's murals that are well past their prime, whether it's infrastructure, roots pushing up on the trail itself, or just landscaping that has really, really been led to decline. I think we should invest in that. If we're gonna call it a walking pedestrian trail in a, in a public park, then we need to really give it the resources that it needs, and I'm not sure we do that. With regards to the people congregating on it, that area is called by many in the local area Jacob's Corner, because Jacob Wallace sat at that corner for years, sometimes panhandling, sometimes drinking, sometimes writing weird, I mean, unique words and language on the wall in chalk, and sometimes throwing potatoes at people passing by. So definitely a storied corner, but a lesson, because Jacob passed away the morning that I ran the first Three Streets block party. And that puts into context why I express so much concern about people struggling with substance use disorder, specifically alcohol, in the community. The doorway program does not serve people who are intoxicated. It's meant for people who are under opioids and being treated for opioid addiction. So there's a, perhaps a misunderstanding in our community that the doorway is exactly like our safe station used to be. Our safe station used to take people who were intoxicated and whose primary drug of choice was alcohol. The doorway doesn't do it that way anymore. They will work with them, but they're not gonna bring them to the respite. They're not gonna provide 24-hour emergency care. That's a huge gap in our services, and we're seeing the impact of it. We know drinking has increased exponentially because of COVID. People were trapped indoors, they didn't know where to go, and we decided that among our essential services were gonna be liquor stores. So it's another example of a public health issue that we need to address. I have to kind of balance the concerns of the immediate residents nearby with opportunities to provide outreach to them, because there aren't enough programs that will walk up and deliberately engage them in like, do you want a cup of coffee? Do you wanna look at sobriety? That type of thing. There are definitely organizations that do that, but I say there aren't enough, because there's still something through the cracks. The rescue mission can be out there three or four times a week. The Soup Kitchen has two outreach workers. Our own Public Health Department has outreach workers. There's still a lot of people who are struggling, a lot of people who don't have anywhere to find community, and a lot of people who combine the two in a way that is a nuisance to our, our neighbors. I know some people might consider them undesirable, and I can definitely empathize with not only Mr., I'm drawing a blank, Clarence Frost's experience having to look at that situation every day, and also with his neighbor across the street, who his fence is the favorite target of the guy who likes to urinate publicly. So welcome to the neighborhood. But I also think we need to be careful about not just moving the problem away for immediate convenience, but actually tackling the problem. Because we have done things to change the way the rail trail is used in the past, taking out trees, moving, putting in community gardens, and that has been with the intent of positive space use, and it's also redistributed issues that we have at the community that are more complex. So we need more conversation about this. I would love to see more Aldermanic support at the continuum of care meetings, where these decisions and resources are being collectively discussed among the nonprofits. And I think it's going to be very important that they get all the support that they need, because the weather's gonna be getting colder. We're gonna be having those conversations about cold weather stations. We can't make assumptions about, oh, well, they can go to the library or whatever, because we don't know for those cases to be sure, that, for certain, that people will have access to those types of things. And unfortunately, when I started that, that push last year to get a cold weather warming station up and running, the person who precipitated it passed away, because during the day, there was nowhere to stay. She got into drinking, and there was a medication reaction which resulted in that. So this is happening all around us. I think the police are potentially encountering an unfair amount of it. I don't think that the police commission was actually an appropriate venue, because I misunderstood the nature of their role versus places like the, the Board of Health. But I do think that we need to shore up our resources in the nonprofits. We need to support community efforts to address these public health issues, because they're impacting our citizens, and they're starting to characterize neighborhoods which don't deserve to be characterized that way.
On this side. Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I first wanted to ask about the, the vote on the police commission. Did we vote it down? Madam Clerk, if you could just...
The motion failed for final passage.
Okay, the motion for final passage failed. And then, did we then?
There was a subsequent motion by Alderwoman Kelly to table at the full board level that carried.
Okay. I didn't know we could do that. Okay. So I just wanted to ask, at one point in July, I had asked that we can, in, to, in anticipation of the like and unlike escrow vote, that we could get a couple of pieces of information. For instance, annual report on the TIPS, including captured incremental increases in assessments and the use of the related tax revenues. And I never did hear back on that. I sent this to you, Mayor Donches, and also to... I sent this to you, Mayor Donches, and also to Director Cummings and the rest of the board, and also CFO Griffin. Do you think that this is something that could be forthcoming, an annual report on the TIFs?
It probably exists. I mean, it's in the budget. And all of the expenditures have to be approved by the, or at least recommended by the TIF Committee and approved by the Board of Aldermen. I mean, these aren't expenditures that are made without your approval. So, I mean, I would say look to your records and your minutes.
Well, I couldn't find it in the CAFER. You said it's in the budget.
Well...
Expenditures, well...
The, the, I don't know, the CAFER is a detailed document, and we'd have to look to see what it, what it includes regarding this. But any expenditures made out of the TIF have to be approved by the Board of Aldermen. I mean, there's a commit, there's an advisory committee, which you asked about the membership up earlier. They don't decide things, they recommend, and the Board of Aldermen has to approve. So if you want a report of what's been done, I would suggest you look to the minutes and the, you know, the Budget Committee and the votes at the Board of Aldermen and you have taken, because that's where, that's where the records are.
Well...
But, you know, I mean, the, that's where the records are. You know, I could ask about how periodically this is summarized, but again, the Board of Aldermen votes on all these things.
Okay, thank you. I sent the email in July. I don't know if...
Well, I don't recall.
Anyone read it. But RSA 162K11 calls for annual reports on TIFs.
They may be issued, but again, there aren't many expenditures being made. I mean, you, there have been, there have been a limited number. You've approved them all, and the contracts are approved as well. So there are some design contracts that are out, excuse me, that are out right now. And there probably is an annual report somewhere.
Well, I had asked for captured incremental increase.
It won't say much because there haven't been many actions taken.
I'm sorry for interrupting you. I thought you were finished. What did you say?
I said that you vote on all those items so that if you want to know what has occurred, you should go back and look at the meetings and the stuff that you voted on.
Okay. I have no way, I had asked for captured incremental increases, which is a piece of information that RSA 162K11 indicates that a report annually should be submitted.
Well, I'm sure that's available.
Pardon me?
I'm sure that's available.
Well, I've asked for it. I asked for it in July. I never got a response.
Well, I don't recall the email. I didn't see the email. I don't recall it. I mean, I assume you sent it, but...
Well, could you, how is the school-street development going?
Good.
Have we signed that development agreement?
Well, the transaction is scheduled to close, I believe, later this month, but it hasn't closed yet.
I have a concern, and I feel, I, I'm sorry that I don't have better things to talk about, but Mayor Donches, I'm still concerned that the Legal Department is sending out, Laura Cahoon asked for the air rights lease, just like I asked for it back in February when we signed it. And when she received it from the Legal Department last week, the air rights lease...
What is the question? It's about an air rights lease?
Right. No, I'm actually just, I'm commenting, that when the air rights lease was sent out to Ms. Cahoon last week, it identified 201 Main Street. And, you know, I, I just don't understand why, she sent it to me two months ago, and I said, gee, we're not renting 201 Main Street, are we? And she said, oh, that's a typo. But she's, she's asked for it, so she has asked for it again two months later, and the same, the same contract goes out described as an executed lease.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I apologize. My fault. I apologize.
It isn't. Okay.
So Alderman Lou, the closing has not happened on that.
Okay. So my concern is that, over and over, the lease is sent out and described as executed. It's, well, it's titled executed, executed lease. It's...
I don't, you know, it's late, I don't think you have your facts straight, which often is the case. So could you please, could you please try to research these things? As Alderman Sheehan used to say, do your homework and figure these things out before you get so deeply into them.
Okay. I just want to finish saying...
You asked the city attorney, you know, you're factually incorrect.
Well, I've been told by the city attorney that he doesn't answer my questions. I can show you the email here, but I hope that's, this is the last time that anyone in this room tells me to do my homework, really. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Congratulations to Alderman Laws and family. That was such a wonderful thing. The pictures were just stunning. Thank you, thank you for putting them up. Put up more. You can never have too many pictures of babies. I wanted to thank the Board of Education for the vote that they took last night. It was a very difficult decision. There were people against it. There were a lot of people, of course, that were there for it, and what it was, was masking, at the beginning of the school at least, based on science and the facts that I have come in through the Department of Health. I'm very proud of them for making that decision, and I'm glad that they care that much about our kids, that they'll stand up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Alderman Gathright.
Yes, my pleasure.
Okay, I would like to take a moment to thank those who are willing to serve on this work-study group for the Police Commission. And I'd like to especially thank Alderman Kelly for being willing to chair it. And that's it. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m., Wednesday, will be the Committee of Infrastructure. It'll be the first time the committee will get to see the Parkin Study from Desmond. So know nothing, don't anticipate. This is more just going to be, it's a plethora of information. Bring your shovels to dig through it, so enjoy.
Your announcement, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I think if you're following suit, you'd find that the budget meeting on August 23rd has four public hearings. So I want to make sure we have a quorum, and hopefully we can get through those in a reasonable amount of time.
Any other committee announcements?
I have one, Alderman Mulcher.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I generally, it's always so far away when we talk about Human Affairs, but the next Human Affairs Committee meeting will be talking about affordable housing and the progress that's been made, and so I wanted to announce it and invite any Aldermen on the board to
Any other committee announcements? Any none? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn.
By roll call, please.
By roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
They turn the lights off.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Woman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 yeas in one nay.
We are adjourned at 10:40 p.m. Thank you, everyone.
10:40.